Good evening. Welcome to tonight's Tewksbury Planning Board meeting. Here being your current president, I will bring this meeting to order. First item on the agenda is minutes, approval of the minutes of March 8th, 2021.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the minute.
Wait a second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
On the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Mr. Ryder?
Aye.
Mr. Delaney?
Aye.
Mr. Fratella?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you. Next item, committee reports administrative action. Enter any committee reports that you know of.
Um, well, not committee reports that I know of, but for the town planners report, there was none this week. I don't know about the other board members for committee reports.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just a quick update on the elementary school. As you see residents drive by, they'll see the structural steel wrapping up. Also, the athletic field and we building facilities are underway as well. So you'll see more to come on that.
Very good. Looks good, Mr. Ryder. Thank you.
Progressing.
It is very much so.
Next item on the agenda. Committee reports, okay, town planners report, Anna.
Hi, there's no, there's no town planners report.
Okay. Well, you have reports, but they're during the, during the hearing, right? You do that all the time. That's good. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, 1455 Main Street as-built acceptance and bond release. We have anybody here for 1455?
Hi, Mr. Chairman, Dick Cuco here, representing Chuck Gordon. Chuck's on the line. But basically, the project has been completed. The DPW has done their final review. I believe you have a letter in your packet where the GPW engineering recommends releasing the bond and approving the project. I have a copy of that letter on my screen if you don't have it in front of you, but if you do, we think the project came out very nice. Not only from the initial design, but the improvements that the board had suggested relative to maneuvering aisles. We think the project came out pretty nice, so we're very proud of it.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Cuco. Appreciate that. Board members, what's your pleasure?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I could take a second to commend Mr. Gordon, Mr. Street, and Mr. Cuco on a very nice project down on Main Street. If they recall, I had a bunch of questions whether the, whether the project in its infancy was going to build up to what it is, and it came out splendid. I have to, I go by it all the time. I guess my only question to Mr. Cuco and Mr. Gordon was, is how is occupancy down there? Because that was one of my concerns as far as the, the business storefronts and how were the residential's faring in the back as well?
Yeah. And Mr. Fratella, everything is sold out except for one of the small commercial units. Mike Bradley and company take the major portion of the office space on the first floor. It was a good location for him to keep his office in Tewksbury and not have to move it out of town. So, you know, and Chuck can speak to it, but I think he's got a couple of leads on the last commercial unit too.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Cuco. That it, Vinnie?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Cuco, for your update. And like I said, the project looks great and I'm glad it, I'm glad it's occupied. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Mr. Delaney, any of them?
I'm all set.
Mr. Ryder?
I'm all set, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion?
I'm making a motion, Mr. Chairman, to release the bond as requested. We have a good report from Mr. Hardeman, our town engineer. I believe the bond was in the amount of $20,000, so I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
On the motion, all in favor say aye.
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 The ayes have it. Mr. Delaney?
Aye.
Mr. Ryder?
Aye.
Mr. Fratella?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that was to accept the as-built also, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh, I appreciate that, Don. You're right on top of things.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Don. You saved me from jumping in.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and board members. Thank you.
You're welcome. Very good. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, 2212 Main Street, approval not required plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dick Cuco here, representing 2212 Main Street Realty Trust. I will try to share my screen if I can get that up here. And I have five other things floating around here to look at. Ah, here we go. The property, Mr. Chairman and board members, is at the intersection of Main Street and March Road. I, the property is about 1.2 acres. We've been working with the property owner next door. And in order to facilitate some things that may or may not happen in the future, we're cutting off a lot in the back here that's called Lot 2. It's about 8,000 square feet. We've listed it as not a building lot. Lot 1 meets all the criteria for building lot. We also added a note in the notes that further reiterate the fact that Lot 2 is not a building lot. So it meets the criteria for approval as an approval not required plan under the subdivision control law. And if you have any questions, I try to answer them. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Cuco. Mr. Delaney, any questions?
I'm all set with this.
Mr., um, who's here? You can take that down, Richard.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Fratella here. So that lot is own commercial, Dick, correct?
That's correct, sir.
Yeah. And with that was my only question. I knew it was, but just for the record, with that, I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I was hesitating. I wanted to see if Mr. Johnson was back here yet.
I am. I snuck in on that last one, but I kept quiet because I didn't hear what you guys talked about.
Very good, very good. Mr. Ryder?
I'm all set, Mr. Chair. Mr. Cuco entered the, the note about that other Lot 2 not being buildable. So all set. Thank you.
Very good. All right. Thank you. This is, do we have a motion?
Motion to endorse the ANA?
Second.
On the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Propose, the ayes have it. Mr. Ryder?
Aye.
Mr. Delaney?
Aye.
Mr. Fratella?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Where are you hiding? I see your name and I don't see you. That's all right.
My camera not on? It says it's on.
No, the chair votes aye.
Camera shot today, Steve.
That's all right. You know, nobody needs to see me.
I see your fan, that's all.
Steve, you may have your camera backwards.
Oh, all right. Well, how do I fix that?
A backwards camera.
Adjust it to the left.
Keep it right there, we're watching TV.
Because I see myself on it.
Steve, we see your shoulder.
All right.
There you go. Keep going, keep going, keep going.
How can that be? It's taking me off the screen from what I can see.
No.
Nope, now we see the TV in your treadmill.
How's that?
See your name. That would see your name.
There you go. We've solved the camera issue.
We call you Steve LeBlanc.
Steve. All right. Next item on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I didn't know if you were done. Thank you.
Yeah. Number 1660 Main Street, Soldier On, concept plan review. And who do we have here? Mr. Delaney? I mean, Mr. Fratella?
We have Mr. Graham ready to start speaking. I see him ready to go. Go ahead, Peter.
Yes, hi. Thank you, gentlemen and ladies and gentlemen. Wanted to introduce Soldier On to the, to the, to the, to the folks here. And I wasn't sure if Bruce Panalitis was able to join us tonight or not. But, but we were, Soldier On was brought into Tewksbury by folks from Tewksbury Home Build, formerly Tewksbury Habitat Build with, with a site on 1660 Main Street to develop some veterans' housing. So, you know, kind of, we don't have a lot of time and I, and I, well, I actually don't know how much time we have, but the concept plan here, which you've all been sent, is our proposed development of 21 units of three studios and 18 one-bedroom units, all for veterans' housing preference. And we're, we do these as 80% and below. We are going to investigate whether there's a market worth developing for the 80 to 120 AMI, but all of our properties thus far are 100% affordable. And that's the way we were envisioning this. What we are looking to do and wanted to introduce to you all is seeking waiver route for the permitting of this development versus a 40B. We've done 40Bs in the past. Friendly 40Bs are something we're familiar with, but it does involve a little bit of loss of local control and a little more complexity on, you know, adding some costs here and there. So what I wanted to just touch the, the primary areas that we're looking at. We are, in terms of our density, what we have, of course, is 18 bedrooms along with three studios. So 18 one-bedrooms and three studios. We also are looking at parking waivers. We are proposing here 18 spaces. We have a lot of data and intel on what the veterans tend to have for vehicle ownership and use. And we will be presenting that memo with our formal planning board presentation. But basically, we see for the most part, under, you know, less than 7.7 cars per unit in most of our developments. So what we've done here is sought to have the 18 spaces, but we'll have some banked areas to do, to add spaces if needed, if it, if it is proven to be under, under accounted. Another area is the height waiver. The, currently, we're proposing a four-story building with a gabled roof that is 63, or six, yeah, 63 feet high. But the site, if you all may know, is, is well below street level. So what we're doing is going to have the first floor start below the grade of the street, which will help to absorb some of that height waiver. And then I think I would, I'll introduce Jim Henley, who is on our team, as well as Jack Sullivan, to give any other comments that you want.
Very good. Gentlemen, anyone like to jump in?
Looks like, Jim, you're muted.
Yeah, I was muted. Sorry about that. Could I share my screen, Mr. Chairman? Sure. Okay. So just for the benefit of the board, any new members we might have, and then also the public as well, this is the property that was subdivided off as part of the Balsam Place approval. You might recall that as part of the mitigation, there was an acre and a half of upland area along Main Street that was provided to the town specifically for affordable housing. What we've done is we've taken a look at placing the building on the lot. We've taken a look at what the waivers specific to putting this building on this lot are. And we've kind of been walking it through the town, talking to the different department heads about the best, best way to move forward. At the end of the day, it's a 5,000-square-foot building footprint that you're looking at there. It'll have 21 one-bedroom units. And if you look at what the underlying multifamily zoning allows for, it's seven units an acre, I believe, or 14 bedrooms per acre. So it'll be pretty close to that, to that density of the underlying zoning. Peter and I have gone back and forth quite a bit on the parking requirements. We know we're short on parking. You can see from this plan that we have extra area to do parking if so needed around the perimeter of this back parking area around this kind of drop-off loop here. We certainly have the space to do it. From, from speaking with them over the last few months, they, they know their program better than me. And we're taking our cues from them on what is realistically needed for the development. Peter mentioned about building height. That would be a waiver and we'll come in with information to support that waiver. But again, the big thing is off of Main Street, the site probably drops down 10 or 12 feet right now. Our next step will be to dig test pits to figure out where the stormwater is and then have that on one end and Main Street on the other and figure out how we can, you know, minimize the, the building height from Main Street in the surrounding area to make it work. Yeah, that's basically the, the site, Jack. I don't know if you have anything to offer on the, on the architectural or if I'd like to answer a question.
Well, Mr. Chairman? And board members, this building that we're proposing is, is very similar to what Mr. Fratella just talked about with Chuck Gordon's project. It's the same materials. It is a bit higher, and that is to get the fourth floor. The, as Peter mentioned, 21 units, two of which will be fully group-two handicap accessible units. And the, the program for Soldier's On, I'm a big fan of, being a veteran myself, as you are, I personally know that there's a huge demand for this type of housing. And I hope you look favorably upon it.
Thank you, Jack. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Always a pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, can we have Mr. Henley put up some renderings of the building itself? The building looks gorgeous.
Mr. Sullivan has those, right?
Oh, Jim has those.
And I, I have them too, in case he doesn't have them open. If you want, if I can.
Yeah, go ahead, Peter. If you got them open, that'd be great.
Yeah, I do, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, while he's doing that, Dick Cuco here. We looked at that early on in the project and just not to be confused with the density per, this is in the overlay district, so the planning board has the ability to determine whether or not the density is appropriate for the use, unlike the other districts where you have the seven-unit-per-acre limit. So when the project comes in for its final permitting, you will be making a determination as to whether or not that is an appropriate density for the proposed use. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cuco. Mr. Henley?
No, that, I, that's a good point. We, we're also in the central village overlay district in the multifamily, so trying to figure out the.
I think someone, I think someone asked, Mr. Fratella asked for renderings?
Okay, Peter, do you have a?
I do have it open. I haven't done the share screen on this. Let's see, here we go.
Are these the same renderings that we have in our package?
They are. They should be, yes. Is, I, can you, can you see the screen at this point?
Just seeing your name, that's all.
Shows as though it's sharing, so let me.
Peter, I got them, I got them up now, if you want.
Okay. Yeah, no, mine, mine said it was sharing, but it doesn't seem to be.
Okay. Can you see them, Mr. Chairman?
That's fine.
Okay, okay. Jack, I don't know if you want to walk through this or if you guys have any questions, but you can see that the, you know, the materials and the, very consistent with what his office has used in the past. Always looks good.
Yeah, and it's a gabled roof with multiple A dormers on it. And the height really matches Balsam Place, which is directly beside it, behind it, I mean. And as Peter mentioned, it, it is down about 10 feet below street level right now. So you're not even going to see the first floor from, from the street. And that 63 feet is to the ridge of the building.
Jack, can I ask you a question?
Yep.
Only because this happened to us before. When Emerald Court, when they came in with the, the high-rise building, the building inspector at that time wanted us to reduce the elevation. So we put our heads together and we came up with a man-side roof, roof to wrap around because there were no utilities inside the attic per se. You think that's necessary here?
I, I, I know why that was requested before. I don't think it applies here, but to answer your question, yes, it could be done. It could be done to have a man-side roof, which is similar to what we're doing at the CNC building further south on Main Street.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, on Emerald Court is that, in that particular district, the, there was no ability to grant any relief for the height of the building. In this district, there is.
Right. Yep. We, we think, you know, the, the gabled roof works well with the, with the surrounding settings. It also is a better roof in terms of snow load and being allowed for, for solar panels and such. So it would, again, it's a, there's a variety of different ways that could be done, but, but this is the one that seemed like it fit best.
Well, I appreciate that, Mr. Graham. The only reason I asked that, if someone brings up the fact that it is over the elevation. And we have to have some answers.
Yep, absolutely.
Very good. Thank you. Thanks for your input. And Jack, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, board members?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman? They said that this was for veterans, for veterans only. And they were gonna put it out to veterans. And they also have it for Tewksbury residents as well? Get priority to, to the units? Is there, is there a way to do that? Or are you just gonna, whoever applies that's qualified to accept them? Am I saying it right? In other words?
Right, so yeah, what it, what we, we have, we have, we face this often where there's, you know, especially when local support, financial support is involved and the desire for a local preference. And there are certain, there definitely are certain parameters with which that is allowed. We, we plan to finance this with state and federal subsidy. So there are some limitations that are dictated by that. But one of the things that we found over and over again is if we, if we've done our jobs right, which we plan to do, and the people in town have shown such a support and desire to have this, that the lottery or the, the rent-up process should be filled with Tewksbury residents just by the nature of where it's located and the work and the outreach that we'll do.
Good.
Okay. I mean, the renderings for this place is absolutely gorgeous. I, I just was wondering if we could get a Tewksbury preference. But if not, whatever you do is fine with me. The one thing I'm looking at, can you tell me which view I'm going to get from Route 38 when I'm passing by?
The flag.
I got three renderings up.
Yeah, you'll get, you'll get the end view, Mr. Delaney, which is the top left and the lower left.
Okay.
That'll be directly facing Main Street.
We couldn't turn it the other way, huh?
No, it doesn't work. We'd lose, we'd lose parking.
Okay. All righty, I'm all set, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Delaney. All right. I'll ask this question. When do you think you'll be applying for a permit before the board officially?
We would be, we would be looking to come in in the next couple of months. So we'll really kind of, we wanted to get this in front of everybody. And, and, you know, we're looking at really, you know, between Jack and Jim's time to kind of button up things and get a package together. We want to be, we'd like to be permitted by the summer so that when we go for the applications to the state, that we have a very fully vetted deal ready to go.
Okay. Just not, not trying to rush you, but as summer comes in, we meet less.
That's right.
And we would like to see this going and shovel in the ground.
That's right, yeah.
And thank you for doing this for the veterans.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of comments if I could.
Oh, Mr. Fratella?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I have seen Mr. Graham and the rest of the group previously at the local housing partnership meeting, where they presented some information on the parking as well. Soldier On provides a, and some of their other projects, I know for, for sure, for sure, they provide a van service. So the need for parking diminishes because of the van service. A lot of these veterans come in knowing that there's a van service that takes them here and there whenever they need it. So the, so the need for parking and the reason for the waiver would be justifiable in my eyes. So another thing Soldier On does, and they explained to us at our last meeting, is that they provide all the furnishings for the buildings. So when a veteran applies and gets granted, you know, a spot in the building, it'll be fully furnished by Soldier On and the, and the work they do for the veterans. I know personally, the veterans in town could use a building like this. I don't know of any facility or any services that the veterans get anywhere near what Soldier On has, does provide for their veterans and the work they do for all veterans, you know? So I think we'd be pleasantly surprised when it's all said and done and we have veterans in Tewksbury that find housing there. Any veterans that are living in Tewksbury housing right now that find a spot in the new building, opens up a spot for other veterans in the regular Tewksbury, other people in the veteran, in the regular veterans' housing, in the regular Tewksbury housing building, I'm sorry. So it opens up spots as veterans leave Tewksbury housing and go to this facility. And, and if these people are not Tewksbury residents, when they apply, they will become Tewksbury residents once they occupy a, a spot in this building. So, you know, I'm very happy with the renderings that you provided, Mr. Sullivan. And the units look great. I know, I know the project will get underway as soon as possible and I look forward to seeing the final plans in front of us eventually. I have one more question if I could, and I know Bruce Buckley's there. So my question, Bruce, is Gordon H. Mansfield Buildings, that's a lot of your other facilities? So what does that respond to? And I don't know, Mr. Mansfield, but I'd be likely pleased by some of your presentation about him.
Sure. Well, thank you, everybody, for letting us attend tonight. Yeah, Gordon Mansfield really is how we've done any of this housing. And to make a sort of long story short, because I know you have a busy day or night, Gordon Mansfield. Gordon Mansfield served during the Tet Offensive and received a Purple Heart for saving many veterans, many soldiers who had been shot, and then at the end of it, he got shot in the back and was paralyzed from the waist down. He then went on to, I think, get a law degree, had a very successful, um, life, where he became the Deputy Secretary for the VA and was actually Acting Secretary, and George Bush appointed him for, I think, three or four months between secretaries. And we were stumbling, Jack Downing, who was very involved in getting Soldieron off the ground and the rest of us, in trying to build permanent housing in roughly 2006, 2007. And again, to make a long story short, Gordon Mansfield grew up for 10 years of his life in Pittsfield, Mass., where we have several, a couple of our first buildings. And we met him, but via a relative, and he then really got the momentum going that let us build our first building, which has now allowed us to build six more. Um, and it was really the momentum that he gave us. So we're very engra- um, indebted to Gordon Mansfield. He passed away unfortunately about seven or eight years ago, but his widow, Linda Mansfield, is a very important part of our family at Soldieron and in a building in Tewks- or Tewksbury, in New Jersey that we had a groundbreaking on, a 70-unit building that's under construction now, she was able to attend. So the long history with Gordon Mansfield and a very important part of really how we've been able to build any housing. So thank you.
Great, thank you, Bruce. I'm all set, Mr. Chairman, and, uh, look forward to the next, uh, round of, um, plans coming forward.
Very good. Mr. Buckley, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, board members, you're all set?
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, Mr. Chair, if I may?
Go right ahead.
All right, thank, thank you. Um, no, I think the, uh, renderings are great. Um, I think it's a great project. One concern I have is, um, the height. Uh, just concerned that we're, uh, understanding it, the property, um, grades. But I'm just concerned that we're going to, uh, open up, um, options for other developments of this height. I just think it's something that, uh, I think we should look at a little closer, but, um, I think the idea of this, uh, a development like this in town is great, and, uh, I'm looking forward to see it further, and I would like to see if there's something that we could do, uh, a rendering with a, um, the reduced height. Thank you.
Mr. Ri- Mr. Ryder, when you say reduce height, are you talking floors or elevation?
Uh, I, well, you know, I, I'm not necessarily floors, I'm looking at elevation. I, I think it's something that could be done.
Mr. Sullivan, you hear that, right?
We can look at that, Mr. Chairman, yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Ryder. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. So, um, I had a quick, a couple of quick ones. One, so regardless of how we permit this, we end up with counting all the units for affordable housing, is that right?
That's right.
Okay, so that's one thing out of the way. The second thing is, and it's kind of feeding off of, um, Mr. Delaney's comment. As gorgeous as the building kind of looks from what you would consider its front, the actual front that faces 38, I just wonder if there's a way to either mix in some of that color that you're using on what's the real front of the building into what is now the side, but the 38 view? As well as whether or not, when you look at that, the top of the building again, whether there's a way to even put in even one of maybe those peaks, even if it's a faux peak, just so it breaks up the front of that building, um, from the street-side view? Because as good as it looks on the side, it's just unfortunate that the side doesn't look the same as the front of the building, even though the side is the front of the building for all intents and purposes from most people's viewpoint. Um, so I don't know if there's any way you can, you can take a look at that, whether there's some way for you to work that, maybe like that dark brown in, whether it's in that middle section above the entranceway, and that would break up sort of the front coloring? Um, or something along those lines, to make it look a little bit more like the side of the building looks.
Yeah.
Um, and then the same thing on the peak, or some, something to break up the top of the roof, uh, from the front view.
Yes, we, we can address that, Mr. Johnson. That's, that's fairly easy on our part.
Okay.
Very good.
And then to Mr., to, sorry, just one more thing, just to Mr. Ryder's comment. I, I fear our, uh, if we go, if we allow this for one thing because of what it sits next to, I don't think it looks as out of place, for one, but two, I don't feel the worry as much about, you know, precedent setting, because I think it's fairly easy to view this project as unique. Um, the likelihood that someone else is gonna try and come in and tell us the building is soldiers' home seems less likely, and, and trying to use that as their basis for, you know, for pushing for a height that we otherwise wouldn't give. I feel like if we treat this as a unique project, and for those reasons, are the, are the, are part of the reasons we use for allowing it, I don't think we set ourselves up to a problem going forward. I mean, anyone can ask anything, but we don't have to say yes.
Yeah.
You know, we can treat things on a, you know, a, a as submitted basis individually, and I feel like in this case, um, the what you get out of this, for what we might be asked to give on this, I think is, um, fairly a no-brainer for us, and I think we're protected going forward for anyone pushing and saying, but you gave it to them. And my response would be that, then give us what they gave us, you know, in a completely, uh-
Apples and oranges.
Well, that's the thing. You get a complete, uh, affordable housing count, and you're getting soldiers' home. So show me the same thing, and then I'll talk to you about the height of your building. So I, I'm not that worried, you know what I mean?
No, very good. I agree.
We also, I mean, we do, the, the rendering as shown kind of, uh, proposes the property at that, uh, at the street level. And with, with, uh, once we get the test pits and know better where we can set that first-floor foundation, that'll make a difference as well to what you see from the road. And we also know that, that there is one neighbor, there is, uh, you know, they're quite exposed right now with the, where the property is. And there are some mitigating things that we would be looking to do to kind of ensure that they get a better, uh, a better view than they've got right now, and, um, and work to kind of mitigate concerns around the height as well.
All right, Mr. Graham, thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thanks for your time, Coach.
We'll, we'll see you when you, we'll see you when we see you.
That's right, sooner than later. Sooner than later.
Thank you, guys. Good, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, next item on the agenda is, if I can find my agenda. Uh, next item on the agenda is 1009 Livingston Street, John F. Sullivan, Barbara Field Trust. Continued public hearing. Mr. Sullivan?
Mr. Chairman, I think, uh, Jim Hanley and Attorney Dave Plunkett and Dick Cuco are here to present this.
Okay.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Sullivan, Jim Hanley, Civil Design Consultants. Um, essentially, and I guess what I'll do is I'll share my screen again if I can do this, um, so you can kind of see what we're doing and where we stand. Okay, um, essentially where we stand is, we had, um, we had been in front of you, uh, previously on, uh, February 22nd. That was our, uh, first formal meeting with you following our conceptual review. On the 24th, after we had your comments, and we had, had, uh, the DPW's, uh, initial review letter, we resubmitted, uh, to address their, their, uh, technical comments and your, your, uh, comments as well. Uh, and we also included in that the, uh, the, uh, alteration, uh, the land alteration permit as well. Um, so that was included in the submission from February, uh, 24th. Um, a few weeks went by, uh, late last week, we got a review letter, the second review letter from the Department of Public Works. Um, essentially, it's very, very straightforward. Um, and we take no exception with the, uh, couple of minor comments that are, that are left. Um, uh, we'll revise and resubmit the plans later this week, so that we'll have, uh, everything kind of finalized and cleaned up. Um, they only had a comment on, on street trees, which I think we have the right amount, but maybe we were trying to, uh, uh, negotiate, uh, utilities as well as, uh, driveway locations, so, so we'll get that cleaned up. And then we had a, uh, we had a, a something to catch based on it was off. But other than that, um, I believe all technical-related comments have been addressed. And we're hoping tight, uh, if, if you don't have any, uh, significant comments that we'd, uh, ask for consideration for, uh, for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Hanley. Um, you mentioned the, uh, and the butter. Mr. Brooks, is, is Mr. Brooks all set or, or what?
Yeah, so, um, I'm gonna do my best, and I know Dick and, uh, uh, Jack are, are on the line too, and they might be able to kind of offer a little bit more, uh, background on this, but my understanding is that some 20 to 25 years ago, there was an application for a reduced frontage lot on the property. Um, that was filed with the Board of Appeals and denied. Um, and that's the only, uh, that's the only previous development that, uh, I'm aware of. Uh, and if there's anything else, I'm sure that they'll chime in, but, uh, it was really just a frontage lot A&R-type, um, uh, 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 attempt that, uh, didn't go anywhere. Um, and then, uh, he also asked a little bit about the waivers and why they are needed, and, and we have, uh, submitted a request for waivers where we define each one. I think you'd find that they're fairly consistent with what has been allowed for in the past, and uh, we actually have, uh, a review letter from DPW that, uh, they support, uh, the waivers.
Good.
So, yeah.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Hanley.
Yes.
Um, Mr. Chairman, the, uh-
Yes, Mr. Cuco.
The, you, this, back in, it was more than 20 years ago, that's how bad, far back I was to try to remembering it, but, uh, uh, at the time, instead of building out the road, uh, it, it was the zoning board and the planning board that said, well, you know, you have enough land to bring this in under regular subdivisions, so why not do that? And so that project, uh, laid fallow, and here we are with, uh, a new road and, uh, not, uh, trying to go for any, uh, variance from the Board of Appeals or from the planning board, so, uh, thank you.
Yep.
I just barely remember it.
I, I bet, I bet there are two people here that can remember that. Besides yourself, Mr. Plunkett and myself. I remember them very well. Uh, Mr. Plunkett, do you have anything you want to add?
Um, Mr. Chairman, unless there's a question specifically referenced to me, I'm not gonna stand in the way of, uh, Mr. Hanley's presentation.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Plunkett. Uh, Mr. Hanley, anything more?
No, I don't think so. Uh, if you have any questions, I'll try to get an answer before you get tonight.
Very good. Thank you very much. Um, Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I, I think I'm, I'm generally all set. I think the only other comment to Mr., Mr. Brooks would also be that the, the special permit you're coming in under didn't exist 20 years ago, the open space version, so that's the other reason why this is before is the way it is.
Yep.
You know, if, if everybody's all set with the, you know, the waivers, I'm fine. If you've got a couple of housekeeping issues that you want to deal with after the fact, that's, I'm okay with it. Um, but otherwise, I don't see any problems at this point. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Uh, Mr. Fatalia?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had just a couple of questions. Uh, I think, um, it appears that Mr. Hardeman is satisfied with, um, with the, um, revised plans, Mr. Hanley, correct?
Yeah, there's, there's two very minor comments that we'll clean up and resubmit it in a day.
I did see somewhere in the notes about a homeowners association. Are you going forward with that?
We are, yep, yep, and that information will be provided to the town. Um, I think it's pretty much cleaned up right now.
Yeah, with that, I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Fatalia. Uh, Mr. Ryder?
Um, uh, Mr. Fatalia asked and, uh, received an answer on one of my questions. Um, other than that, um, and also Mr. Johnson answered, uh, the other question, um, from Mr. Brooks in terms of, um, the different requirements back when he brought this up. Other than that, uh, Mr. Hardeman seemed to be okay with everything. Um, I'm good. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Very good. Mr. Delaney?
Yeah, I guess, well, I'm, I'm good as well. My, all my questions were answered. Uh, and if Mr. Hardeman and the DPW director agree with it, I'm all for it. I'm all set, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I am all set likewise. Um, Mr., uh, is there anybody on, in fact, I, before I started this, I was supposed to, uh, offer the phone number to call. I will do so now. And would anybody would like to call in for the remainder of this meeting? Not this hearing, but this meeting. The number is 978-771-0819. And, um, Brian, anybody waiting or?
We have no callers, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, well, we wait about 30 seconds, is that all right?
Sure thing, Mr. Chair.
All right.
So, Mr. Chairman?
This is, you just, this is Mrs. McGinty. I was just gonna ask if you have something.
So, um, we need to have the final plans in order to close the hearing. Um, for the board to approve those.
The final plans?
Yep. So comment number seven, there is gonna be a change to the plan, and then comment number 15, a change to the plan.
Mr. Hanley, you understanding this?
Um, yeah, I understand what you're saying. I'm not sure that, uh, we've always done that in the past, but if that's what we need to do, uh, I'll move it forward, and I, I mean, we, literally, we'll have it submitted tomorrow, so.
Yeah, that's what needs to happen. That's consistent with other applications. Um, and then what I'll do is finalize the conditions and waivers for the board to review. Um, and then, so my suggestion would be to, um, to, if you do close a hearing, um, to continue to April 12th, but I would just keep it open until April 12th.
Yep.
And you have the file plans and then the conditions and waivers.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, uh, you know,
Mr. Cuco.
That's acceptable if, uh, if, uh, at that meeting, you could take the vote, because I think Ms. McGinty will have a draft, uh, of the, um, special permit that everyone will be able to review before then, so, um, yeah, that, that would probably be a good compromise.
Very good. Um, Mrs. McGinty, well, go ahead.
Sorry, um, so just to clarify, I don't do a full, uh, copy of the full special permit draft. It's just the conditions, special permit conditions, and the waivers.
Yeah, that, that, yeah, that's fine. We don't need to see all the boilerplate, just so that everybody knows what the conditions are, uh, and, uh, we can move forward.
All right, fine, and, uh, if we can do this, when we, uh, with the waiver requests, there are three, um, explaining the reason why, and, uh, the approval from whoever is supporting this, each one. All right, Mrs. McGinty?
So the, I draft the waivers, but it's the board who makes the, the fact of findings, so that's during the closing process, so I won't be providing that, um-
Okay, so we'll have that next mo- next meeting.
Next meeting, if you can, yeah, continue to that one.
Okay, so we'll be able to give a vote then. All right.
And that includes the land disturbance permit?
Oh, that's right. Thank you.
We'll be going on to the next meeting too, uh, tonight.
Um, it, this, yeah, that's correct. Thank you, Mr. Cuco. There was the late submittal for a, um, land disturbance permit. Not late, I shouldn't say, but a land disturbance permit that was applied for, uh, we're hearing it today. Wasn't part of the original submittal, is that right, Mr. Hanley?
Correct, yeah, we wanted to get, uh, wanted to get the original application in, and we followed up with this, uh, but yeah.
All right. Um, all right.
So, Mr. Chairman, may I add a comment?
Go right ahead.
Um, I did not see a review letter from the town engineer for the land disturbance permit. So I'm not sure where that stands with him.
I thought I saw one, maybe, um, well, I'm not positive of that, but I know I read a review letter on the land disturbance. In the seven hours I did- in the seven hours I did this, but.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, it is noted in his cover letter from March 18th that the application for land disturbance permit is, is information that was included in his package of information.
All right. Well, we'll have to put this, put this together, so we have it for next meeting.
Mr. Chairman, short of the, short of the town engineer sending us something that he's got an issue with this. We've been doing these things, we haven't, we haven't had a problem with these yet. So unless he tells us he's got an issue, I'm pretty sure we're okay.
I feel that too. Absolutely, absolutely. All right. I'm just wondering if we have to accept this application as part of the hearing process.
In order to cover all bases, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to make a motion to accept the land disturbance permit as part of this application review that was submitted this evening.
Very good. Thank you. Wait a second.
I was thinking that.
Second.
On the motion, if I have a say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the ayes, have it. Mr. Delaney.
Aye.
Mr. Fertalia.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Ryder.
Aye.
Chief of Oz, aye. We're all set.
All right, Mr. Chairman, can, I guess we're ready for a motion to continue this to the next meeting then?
Yes, I was gonna ask Anna for a time.
So, Mr. Chairman, the, for April 12th, the next available time is at 7:10.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to continue this hearing to 7:10 on 4/12.
Second, second. On the motion, if I have a say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the ayes, have it, Mr. Ryder.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Fertalia.
Aye.
Mr. Delaney.
Aye.
I both aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. Chairman, board members, thank you very much.
Very good. Thanks, Chuck. Next item on the agenda. 181 Pine Street, Landplex LLC on behalf of Pine and Whipple LLC. Who, who's Mr. Plunkett? I know you're here. Anybody else?
I am coming.
Mr. Hammer's here.
Mr. Hammer, Mr. Andella. All right. Thank you. Well, let me just say this. We got your plan today and your cover letter addressing what the DPW submitted based on your plan. I'm not sure what the rest of the board wants to do with this, this evening. But I'm gonna let them say it. Let me start, Mr. Ren. Unless you wanna, I'm sorry, if you want to present something to us, Mr. Hammer.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful.
All right, go right ahead.
To walk through the, oh, sorry, Mr. Plunkett.
Just as an initial introduction, Mr. Chairman. You know, the plan has been presented, you know, to give recognition of the fact that this purposes of acquiring additional land so that we could address matters that were brought forward by DPW and the board in prior hearings. So now we're able to address the question of the 25 foot radii on both sides of the new roadway entered into the, the project, the 75 foot of frontage. Excuse me. And, and I think that, you know, it's, you know, with Mr. Hammer's presentation showed that we're able to properly address anything and everything that was of concern previously. And, you know, it took some doing, but Mr. Andella did it. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Hammer.
Very good. Mr. Hammer.
Great, thank you. I'm gonna share my screen with everyone. So can everyone see this screen here? The, the, the plan of lands, plan in front of us?
Yep. Mr. Hammer, can just give me a second. I want to ask Brian if the next door neighbor has joined us. Brian?
Hey, sorry about that, Mr. Chairman. He did call in, but he's going to wait until the public comment portion. Or do you want me to put him through now?
No, that's all right. Thank you. Just making sure we didn't miss him.
Yep, no, I'll make sure that he gets through.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hammer, sorry.
No, no problem at all. So. So as the, the issue became from the from the perspective of the the DPW comments, as well as, you know, the fire department comments was is that we needed to obtain additional area, which is shown here as this parcel B that the Kelly family has provided to the project in order for us to achieve this 25 foot pavement radius in order to comply with the geometry of the roadways per the subdivision regulations. Additionally, that was a, a comment from the fire department as well, that they required a 25 foot pavement radius. So we were able to acquire this parcel B here. And then exchange, we're gonna provide this parcel A back to the Kelly family. And that enables us to not require the waivers that were originally requested for the entrance roadway. And it enabled us to get rid of those waivers. What it also enabled us to do is to obtain some additional site distance by being able to move the roadway over slightly because of that rounding. And thus we were able to eliminate the waiver for the site distance requirement. So with that, we modified the special permit to include the Kelly parcel into the project. And also with that came the re-notification of additional butters that were part of the butter notice that would be subject to the Kelly property being included in the project. This plan here shows those pavement radiuses coming in the entrance here and here. And it also shows where one of the comments that came back from the DPW last week was to provide the grass strip with the sidewalk, which this plan shows that now. And also the addition of some more street trees along the roadway itself, which was also a comment by Mr. Hardeman. Another thing that has transpired since the time we submitted this project until now is that there's been a new set of stormwater bylaws that went into effect last fall. I didn't realize that those stormwater bylaws would affect the project. So what we did is we redesigned and added some added a four bay area here to the detention basin to comply with the additional total suspended solids that increased since the prior stormwater bylaws until the most recent stormwater bylaws. And also this detention basin also takes care of the phosphorus removal, which is also a requirement as part of the new bylaws. So we went and did that change since last Wednesday and added that to the plan. Additionally, there was, if you go to Mr. Hardeman's comments, there's a question related to the grading of the, the houses and how the, the entire site is integral to each other by way of the grading. And we're gonna provide a blanket easement to the homeowners association documents that would further restrict any of the individual lots from grading on their lots because of the need to leave the grading the way that it's set per the, the design of the site. The the remainder of the comments were mainly technical in the identification of some of the details on the detail sheet, which, you know, we'll be working through those with DPW. But those changes don't materially change the, the site the way that it's shown to you tonight. And those are the changes that were relevant to the comments that were provided last week by DPW that I wanted to walk through with the board.
Very good. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Anything else?
Uh, no, no, that's it.
All right, very good. Mr. Plunkett, anything else?
Um, no, Mr. Chairman, I think Mr. Hammer addressed all the major changes. But is that this is a proposal that would now be compliant with all the requirements and address all the issues that have been brought out in previous hearings. And we're looking forward to finalizing and moving forward this.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Plunkett. Board members, Mr. Ryder.
Hey, Mr. Chair. I'm much happier with the roadway. Still, the biggest concern I have here is the wick drains. I still think that's going to be an issue, understanding there's you know, there's a homeowner association, but I've never seen a, a homeowners association in my years doing this and being in this business that those are maintained properly. And that grade, there's no way to take, I guess, Mr. Hammer, can you get those? Instead of putting a, a wick drain, can you get that to that back new four bay? Can you get a some out to that back four bay?
So the, the initial answer to that is, is if you recall, the reason for the wick drain, I'm getting a little bit of feedback. I don't know if a few folks are as well. So I'll start over. So if you recall, Mr. Ryder, the original reason for the wick drain was to provide some additional mitigation for the water that's currently coming off of the, the middle of this site down towards the Hawkinson property. So that, the wick drain was simply a mitigation device. And if you go to the pre-post calculation, we are a reduction in flow from this project onto the Hawkinson property without taking benefit of the wick drain itself. I went out to the site today, in fact, and there is a small wet area there. But, you know, that, the water being held there is being held up by a leaf layer, which is gonna be removed. And, you know, that's a low point of, of the project. And, and we can't take the water and, and, and send it back uphill. I guess this is the simple answer to that.
No, I understand, I, I understand that one. That was my question is the ability to take, that's what, 127 at your rim at that?
Yeah, that's correct.
And what's your lowest point at the new four bay? 130, 131, 1, 130? Or is even goes down to 129?
128.5. Yeah.
I, I'm just concerned, I mean, I've, I've, you know, there had, there is evidence from Mr. Hopkinson of puddling there. And we, we've all seen it. There's Mr. Hopkins in a rowboat in that area. And there's going to be impact on that corner of that parcel. And I'm, I'm concerned with, you've addressed everything else, but that one key point that continues to come up. And I understand you can make the calculations and the calculations are what they are. But, you know, pictures are worth a thousand words. And those pictures are evidence that that area does flood. And I'm very concerned that that, that a wick drain, it may take it on a mild year. But if we get a, a, a wet spring, that area is gonna be impacted. And those wick drains are not, they're, they're not gonna be, they're not gonna work properly.
So, so if you recall, we went through a full in-depth analysis of the pre-development contributing area to that low point in the post-development area. We also went out and did a microtopography analyzing that area. And, you know, we have a lot, we have a much less contributing area going to that low point than what's going to there now. So where you think that that wick drain is the governing drainage feature to control this water? It's actually not. It's our full drainage system takes the water that was existing today, going to that low spot, is now taking it to the backside of the site. And we do know from extensive soil testing that there is a, a sand, fine sand gravel layer that exhibits on the site that we know is gonna drain and, and function appropriately for this design. So we've, we've gone through and performed all the exercises necessary in order to show that this design is sound and will function. And a lot of that was done in conjunction with DPW as well. So we've taken the time to ensure that this design is gonna function the way that it's shown here tonight.
Well, Ed, as you know, Mr. Hammer, you can put a lot of things on paper. And as you've been in the industry a long time, I'm concerned there. And rightfully so, and the residents concerned. And I think this is something that he should feel, the resident should feel that this issue is gonna be mitigated. And I understand your take, you're, you're, you've taken significant amount of that water and put it in, in other areas within that site. But in my, in my opinion, and, you know, based purely based on elevations, that area could be impacted. That is the lowest point on your parcel. Correct in saying that? That is, that, that's 127 is a rim of that wick drain at that low point between the parcel between lot, your first lot and Mr. Hopkinson's property. If there is to be an impacted location on that site, it will be that area. And I'm just concerned that the wick drain will not handle the excess. So just my concern.
No, and it's a, it's a valid concern, Eric. We've, we understand the low point. We understand the material, the substrate beneath this ground, uh, cause we've done a confirmatory soil test. But we also have to remember that we're mitigating flow off of the Hawkinson property as well with these wick drains.
I, I understand that. I'm just concerned, you know, if I was in a butter, I would have the same concerns as Mr. Hopkinson. So.
This is gonna be.
For your assurance.
One of the assurances is, is we're gonna get rid of all the leaves that have been accumulating there over time. So we're gonna get rid of that layer that's been preventing the water from getting to the sand, which is beneath those leaves. And the leaf layer is thick. So that's all gonna be removed. This is all gonna be a clean, grassed low point with two wick drains. That's gonna be managed and operated by the operation and maintenance plan that's gonna be governed by the, the homeowners association to ensure those are, are taken care of and maintained properly. Whereas right now, today, they're just, they're not.
Okay, and that's going to be managed, and that, that's gonna be managed by the homeowners association. And DPW will have oversight of that. DPW will have oversight of that management if there's impacted.
Yeah.
That that would be the requirement. Okay, so this.
That's what got set up.
Okay, so detention pot will not become a problem of DPW, because I I know Mr. Hardeman and Mr. Gilbert have plenty within town that they don't need, they don't need anymore. So.
So we agreed.
I think that's the reassurance with Mr. Hopkinson, that if there is any impact on his property, then he will have he'll have something to go against. It's going to go against ultimately, go against the homeowners association and not, not against the town.
The homeowners association has a, an inspection and maintenance requirement on a yearly basis that requires these drainage systems to be maintained, as you know. So that's the way that it's set up, and that's the way that they need to be maintained.
And Mr. Chairman, just to add on to Mr. Hammer's comment and to address Mr. Ryder's question also.
Go ahead, Mr. Plunkett.
In the format of the homeowners association, there's a specific provision that's in there. And this was the format that was approved by when with Attorney Zerulis, that it gives the town a lien hold position against the owners through the homeowners association. And if they don't do what they're supposed to do, and then the town has to go in there and take things into their hands, they, the town gets reimbursed, and it's per the terms of the homeowners association, a lien against the unit owners as part of their own interests and part of their being members of the of the homeowners association. So you know, again, understanding, but there is a mechanism. It's not just, you know, leaving somebody in the dock in terms of no recourse or anything else. And this is a provision that, you know, was with the review and approval from town council that, you know, I think addresses that very concern that there is recourse and that the homeowners, if they don't do what they're supposed to do, there's they're impacted by it, by the fact that it can be a lien against them. And I I'll look at the terms, but I'm pretty sure that the language indicates that that lien is going to be, is capable of being assessed by the town as, you know, similar to if you don't pay your water and sewer, it can then go over into your ledger as a tax. I mean, this will that could be foreclosed on by the by the town. So so it's really significant, especially in light of fact, the municipal obligations take priority over the banks over yours, you know, your mortgages. And when the mortgagee gets notice that the, that the you know, municipality has sent out a notice of foreclosure, you can be certain people are going to pay. So there there is significant leverage there. There is significant oversight. And you know, I I think that that is properly addressed.
Okay. And I mean, I appreciate it, you know, if this project is approved. And I I would appreciate that the developer continued to work with Mr. Hopkinson during the development of this parcel and put him at ease during the entire process. He is a very intelligent, has worked in this field, and I think involving him along the way with this would go, be a good neighbor here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ryder. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't know if it's already written in, but if it's not, we make it a condition that they send a copy of the proof of the maintenance and management, the annual paperwork every year for the town.
To the DPW.
Yeah, that way it's on file. That way, say, for example, Mr. Hopkinson wants to see it. You know, it's there and it's going to be there each year. And make that a requirement, one, you know, whether we have to do it or if it's something that's already in the, you know, that homeowner stuff. But I just assume we put it in ours. That would be, know it's there.
Great point, Stephen.
Thank you. Just because I don't have the the same level of expertise as Mr. Ryder on this. I I do, I typically feel like we have to fall back on the numbers that we get, that we get submitted, because when we say, do the numbers say you're not going to have more runoff than you did before? If we substitute something for what the numbers are saying, then I feel like we get into a a potential position of where we're, we're trying to guess on every project of what we think might happen and then make a judgment. But the requirements that that someone's supposed to submit to the town say, do X, show us X. So that, you know, and I I don't discount Mr. Ryder's experience because it's real. So I I understand that. But for me, I feel like, you know, if we say, show us the numbers and you show us the numbers, then saying, but I'm not sure I buy the numbers. I I think we get into a tough position there of trying to make that, make that override that each time we have those numbers submitted for any project. One of my questions, so just to 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 sort of make it easier in my own mind, if nothing happened on this site as compared to you developing this site without those wicks, more or less water was would be coming on to potentially in a bad year, because that's what we're talking about here, something that isn't normally going to be handled. Is more, more before going to have gone on to Mr. Hopkinson's than now?
That's correct.
So if nothing happens there and it's a bad year, he's worse off than he would be if it turns out that what you presented to us does not work properly going forward. Is that accurate?
In terms of water volume, yes.
Okay. Okay. You know, you you added, you added the the last portion as sort of an an extra. But ultimately, the numbers say, short of something failing or multiple things failing potentially here and having it be an out of the ordinary, potentially, you know, wet season, I guess you want to put it. Right. What what what's presented here will work unless and until we see otherwise. Is that, and it will work better than what he would have happening to him if it didn't exist.
That's correct. You know, it's our job, as well as your review engineer, to ensure that there's no adverse impacts to abutting properties with the proposed development.
Okay. All right. You know, I'm glad, you know, on the, on the, on the changes that you made by acquiring the the extra or the 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 property swap. I think that that alleviates alleviates a back and forth that I think we were having with the town engineer or DPW that I I felt like I wasn't really happy with the idea we were going to have to potentially make a decision that, you know, might be adverse to what they were asking us to do. You know, and not that we can't do it, but I hate doing it when there's possibly another way to fix it. And ultimately, you came up with a way to fix that. So I think that makes things a lot simpler for us. Other than that, I think, I think I'm all set right now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very good, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Fratelli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of comments I had. You know, I I'm not privy to the new reports that were just made available today by Mr. Hammer's office, I believe, the new plans that we said have submitted today. I don't, I haven't, haven't seen them, all the comments you made about Mr. Hardeman's comments. But I had thought, Mr. Hammer, that after all was said and done, that you would have been a lot farther along with Mr. Hardeman than before you came to present tonight. So it seems like there are a lot of outstanding comments that Mr. Hardeman still has. And Mr. Hardeman is our go-to guy as far as what he says and what he does and what and what what he provides us is his expertise. I don't have that expertise, so I rely on him as a board member to, for all his comments. So I guess with that, I I had thought we would have been a lot farther along than we are rather than, and I haven't seen your most recent comments, so maybe we are, but I'm, I haven't, I haven't read them. So hopefully we are. So so are we?
We are. Mr. Fratelli, I I have to say, we did have some changes in the stormwater bylaws, which I was not aware of, which affected, you know, the drainage calculate, not the drainage calculations, but the way that the drainage has enabled us to get some more suspended solids removal as well as this phosphorus removal, which we did not, I did not know had changed in the fall of 2020. So I was caught a little bit off guard by that. We did make a submission on the 25th of February, I believe. So we, you know, we submitted the the plans in enough time. And we had a few items which I did not know of, so I apologize for that. But we just wanted to make sure that we did everything we possibly can to address those additional concerns in order to get the best plan we could for this evening. So that's.
Bye. A couple of other questions I had. So if I'm listening to your statements earlier, so when you're, you're going to put some type of condition into the homeowners association that they can't touch the grading at all?
That's correct.
So a homeowner cannot put a pool in if he wanted to?
Well, if they wanted to put a pool in, we we would probably have to go back and amend the project and and add the pool in.
Okay, so.
To ensure that that pool would not adversely affect what's been approved by this project in the way that the grading stands today.
Okay. So that would go for an addition to, if somebody wanted to make an addition to his house somehow, somewhere?
Yep.
It'd have to be the same process. Wow, that's, that's pretty that's pretty restrictive as far as an owner that has to go through all those hoops and stuff just to do, you know, a small, you know, above-ground pool or something like that, because it is going to change probably some of the grading, correct?
That's correct. So you know, with these open space residential subdivisions, where we reduce the size of the lots down from 40,000 down to 10,000, these, these changes affect, there's a ripple effect to it. So if they, if they do an addition, let's say on the back of one of the properties and the grading and the addition has has no effect on the current drainage configuration that's been approved for the project, then the the town engineer and the planning board could make that administrative approval based on that information coming before them.
Yeah.
But this is a special permit that in that encapsulates all four of the parcels.
Sure.
Sure. Because they're on small lots.
Okay, my last and final question for tonight is, where are we with your discussion or your opinion on the sidewalk? That with Mr. Hardeman presented.
Yes, we, yeah, so we added the grass strip between the roadway and the sidewalk. So we added that onto the plan. So we're, we're fully complying with that. And as you know, that the sidewalk is going to be on one side of the roadway.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll be asking for that one waiver.
Well, you're asking for that, right? So.
Yeah.
You're going to be asking for that waiver, right? Okay.
Yep. So so we we made that material change, and that's updated in these plans, as well as the addition of the additional shade trees.
Okay. Also, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fratelli. Mr. Delaney.
Yeah, I guess my question is going to be to Mr. Plunkett. You said a lot of things about the drainage, the homeowners doing certain things or whatever. With a lot of the things you said tonight, it would make it a lot easier for me if you could, with one of our, with the next meeting, if you could have something like that in writing so that we know when we make a motion to approve or disapprove or whatever we do, that that is in writing and we have a good idea of what we're dealing with. In other words, you said a lot of things about the drainage, but I don't catch all of it.
Yeah.
I will re, and we have submitted the homeowners association document, and it was reviewed and then we resent. I had incorporated all the requested changes that were suggested by Attorney Zerulis at the time. But certainly, we can update it and send it on to make certain that you see the final product at this time.
Well, you know, the, the reason why I'm asking you is when you make a motion for this project, there's going to be a lot of things in and out and upside down, I guess. But if I could see it in writing in front of me, I know what I'm approving. And that's what I'm asking. I'm asking for for that type of letter. If I could, you know, just a document that says, so when we make a motion, we can include it in.
I'll, I'll make sure that we resend the, the declaration of the homeowners association and the trust that's affected or incorporated into it that establishes the administration of the, of the association. That would be no problem.
Mr. Plunkett.
Chairman, can I ask a question?
I was just going to ask the same question, I think. You're going to add, David, the that the the results will be submitted to the DPW every year?
Yeah, I I did take that note down as a addition to the terms or responsibilities of the association. So that would be part of the updated, final draft that I will forward on to the office.
Thank you, Mr. Plunkett. Mr. Johnson, was it something else?
Okay, yeah. Same thing. I'm just, this is on that homeowners thing. It's just, we have those going on in all a, a lot of our projects, but we typically don't see them, which is, I think, what Mr. Delaney is commenting on. I think maybe it wouldn't be a bad idea. I know they're not always finalized. But maybe whatever form they're in at the time we're finishing up, because we know it's town council that finally signs off on those things, not us. But maybe it wouldn't be a bad idea to make sure we do get, wherever they are in the process, in our hands, right before we're ready to finish up. Just we have them in the packet. It's not something we typically get, but Mr. Delaney is probably not wrong. Wouldn't be a bad idea to get at least the draft copy that's gone, that's in process at the time just to know, you know, what the homeowners association is going to do.
Yep.
That's no problem.
Very good.
Okay, one, I have one other question. Do you? I think it's the first time I've ever seen landscaping and whatever, being part of moving water. And that's what Mr. Ryder is struck on it. A lot of us have stuck on it. And that's kind of the reason why I want to see it in writing, so that we're guaranteed something here that we're we're not going to get the water or whatever. I know, Mr. Hopkinson, he he's floating a canoe, but I don't think he wants to float a yacht. And I just want to make sure that this goes in the way it's supposed to. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Delaney. I have a comment and a question. Mr. Hammer mentioned something about the 10,000 square foot lots. I don't want anybody to get under the feeling that these are 10,000 square foot lots, because they are not. They're anywhere from 17, 17,000 to 23,000 square foot lots. So it's not a little postage stamp, because some people that might have heard that don't have a plan in front of them. So that's all I want to say about that. My question to you is this, Mr. Plunkett or Mr. Hammer? Not too long ago, Mr. Mr. the DPW engineer, Mr. Hardeman, said he expected sidewalks on Whipple Road adjacent to the subdivision and Pine Street. Is he still feeling that he wants that and needs that or is part of the, it should be part of the plan?
Mr. Chairman, relative to the Pine Street, I think he was trying to take into account land that wasn't part of the development. And I believe we came to a conclusion and and I think a rightful conclusion that, you know, any sidewalk development is only across the land that is part of the proposal. Same thing with any of the other proposals that come before you. You don't require them to put sidewalks on public ways that they don't have frontage on. The, the, there is a segment in which the side, I mean, God bless you. There is a section of the entire parcel, the overall parcel, that has frontage on Whipple Road. And someone jumped on the mat or gym, but I believe that many of number of meetings ago, that it was agreed for that length, there would be a contribution. There would be a contribution to the. Town, uh. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, I'm not sure. I was just surprised that, um, it, I, I'm sure it just didn't disappear.
No.
But I want to make sure that it's not, hasn't been overlooked and all of a sudden someone says at the last minute, oh yeah, by the way. Uh, because it was, if not a meeting ago, it was two meetings ago that that subject came up.
I mean, if you, we're dealing with the length, only the land that's part of the. Of the project. We're not dealing with other people's land or land that isn't part of the project.
Well, I understand that because there are only, uh, I only see two lots. Um. On Pine Street, which is Mr. Hopkinson and the next door neighbor that. Uh, one eighty-one, I guess. I'm not sure who owns that. Um. But when you go around the corner, you have, uh, land owned by. I believe Mr. Andella. At the Whipple LLC and. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Plunkett. Who was RK A Company LLC? Is that just another name for Mr. Andella?
I, I'm not sure. I, I'll, I'll ask Mr. Andella to address that, but the proposal here is only the. Project, you know, the, the parcel of this, this project. I, I see Mr. Andella raised his hand, so I.
Go right ahead, Mr. Andella.
Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me now? Yeah.
Yes.
We, we've eaten like three meetings ago and we were going to give them the sidewalk, but it was like a hundred and eighty-one feet.
Breaking up. We're not hearing you.
RK, it's Mr. Ahern. They built those two.
Okay, it doesn't say. Okay, it doesn't say Ahern. It just says RK A. A is Andella also.
Yeah, that's, that's okay. That's not us though. I wish it was. They built those two houses and. I think it is, whatever. I can't read my plan. It's too small. Maybe Mac could jump in. But, um.
Yeah, I can answer that. So, so, uh. We'll call it RKACO LLC is not part of, uh, this development is not, um, an entity of James Andella. Okay.
Okay.
What about, uh, Whipple LLC, Pine and Whipple LLC? That, that is four A, lot four A is.
But it's not part of this project.
Yeah, but it's not part of this, correct? All right.
So it's the open, where the four A is under the power lines. And I think it's around a hundred and eighty feet plus or minus, Matt. What is it? Do you see?
Uh, I'd have to go back, but it was, um, there was a calculation made and submitted to the record on the length of that frontage. Okay. I can, I can tell you what that is actually.
Mr. Chairman, why?
It's on sheet. It's on sheet, um. Three of seven. And it's, um. Sixty-nine point sixty-six plus forty-seven point two O, which I'll tell you what that is. That's one sixteen point eight six, so it's rounded to one seventeen, hundred and seventeen feet. Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Go ahead, Mr. Andella.
Read two or three, three meetings ago that I would put that money into the sidewalk fund for that section of the road, even. Though we didn't think it would be right, but that's okay. We could do that.
Okay. Who, and who did you get the figure from?
Oh, I didn't get that dollar yet. Mr. Hardeman makes that figure. And he, and he does it for contractor base.
Well, that'll be a surprise to me because I heard differently today.
He requested it the other way. He requested in his letter that he sent out. That he would want us to do it and. Um, I don't know what the right word would be.
The town, the town figures?
And the town figures, but that ain't how he's ever done it so far in his, in his life.
That's right. That's the discussion we have, we were having today.
Oh, he, he already agreed to it three months ago.
Okay.
Um, we can go from there. Um.
That's one of the three things I have to talk to Mr. Hardeman tomorrow about and report back to the board.
Okay. The other two, you want to tell us what they are or they?
No, it's got nothing to do with you.
Oh, okay. Okay. I just didn't know if there was something else in the project. Okay. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Um, Mr. Hammer, could you tell me just for my own edification is parcel A. What is the driveway entrance into parcel A for? Yeah, so, um, the Kellys, um, they have a pool in their backyard. Mm-hmm. And then they have their, obviously their backyard and they just wanted, uh, an area to be able to access that backyard if need be. Um, you know, in case of, uh. You know, a maintenance thing with the pool area or, uh, maintenance to their fence. Uh, and just, just simply to get to their backyard in an easier manner. So we just provided a small little gravel area for them. Okay, okay. Is that going to be a problem with the association? Well, no, that parcel, well, I'll let Mr. Plunkett answer that. Mr. Plunkett?
Yeah, that, that will not be part of the, uh, common area that will be covered by the homeowners association. So.
Right.
Uh, that's no issue with the association because that is actually not part of the project. Because that land will be one, will, uh, adjoin, uh, become part of the Kelly parcel. It'll have the result in square footage as shown on the plan. So.
All right. Without, without looking at the, uh. The one foot contour maps. Will that mean that possibly you should, you could have water. Sheet flowing out of that driveway or into that driveway? Uh, we've taken that into consideration. That car cut into our, um, drainage calculations. Okay. Yeah. Very good. Thank you very much.
Very well.
Yes. At this time, uh, Brian is, uh. Anybody on the phone for us this evening?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, Mr. Hopkinson will be calling in. Uh, there's a delay though, so we might want to give him a few seconds.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, while we wait for Mr. Hopkins to call in, can I just?
Yes.
Get a clarification because what you were just talking about with the sidewalk thing, maybe I got confused. But when we've ever done sidewalks, we always say how much, like how much, how much can we feet? And then the town engineer eventually comes up with a number, right? Isn't that normal?
Right.
So if we decide for some reason that we want to either, I mean, we could if we want simply waive it period. And take nothing into the sidewalk fund if we want to, right? I mean, we're not going to do it, but we could. Um. But it's, what I'm saying is it's up to us how much sidewalk is going to be donated for. Then he just comes up with the number, correct?
Correct. The, the length of the sidewalk is, is up to us.
So if we say we want the little, the bit on Pine Street and we want a hundred and eighteen feet or whatever it is, seventeen feet on Whipple. Whatever those two numbers total up to, we say that and that's our determination. And then the town engineer simply does the math.
Does the math, but the math is being done by a different number now. The number is, uh, before was, uh, the number based on what our engineer. Um, gave us contractors cost. Whereas the town's cost is in some cases two or two and a half times that. Based on their, um. The cost that they incur for doing the job. Um. I had a conversation today with Mr. With a couple of people relative to this problem. And it is a problem because there's some disagreements as to where this figure came from. So what we're trying to do is get it to a point where we know what the town engineer thinks the figure should be. And what engineers who work for the developers think the, the figure should be. And maybe we can come to an agreement. A happy medium.
Okay. All right. That makes more sense. Now I get it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That's a long answer for a small subject, but it's a big subject. Um.
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
What we don't, yeah, ju- thank you, Mr. Thank you, Brian. What we don't want. Is contractors saying to us, well, if you want me to give you X number of dollars. And I know I can do it for a lot less than that. I'm going to put it in, even if going nowhere and not needed. But it's part of the subdivision bylaws. So that's what I don't want to see happening. And I don't think anybody else would either. And Brian, thank you. Was, uh, Mr. Hopkinson there?
He is, Mr. Chairman. Uh, you're on, Mr. Hopkinson.
Go right ahead, Mr. Hopkinson. Go ahead. Of it, clearly.
Oh. We have another good connection. Can you hear me now?
A little better.
Can you hear me?
Yes, proceed, Mr. Hopkinson.
Okay. Uh, the comments made about the, the wick drains and things. Um, maybe there's going to flow more right, so nothing kind of come back on my property. Uh, light in the stand knows that language. However, ice and stone and all that stuff will, will. We could take the landscape down there. And again, water will come over my property. They'll need them, by the way. Yeah, making it something that, uh. More than I have now is, is in assumption and, uh. Uh, the rider comes to get something that the water's going to flood because you have tracks and sinkings. So you can't have one way and not the other way. It's like I can see. The, um. The drainage originally was that, the wick drain was at one twenty-eight. And, uh, a lot of the, um, uh, conventions and a lot of calculations were done on that. Now with the wick drains dropped to one twenty-seven. And the calculations were done because that actually. Uh, takes away from the, um, area that which can be turned to. Now the, um. Groundwater in that area is, uh, one twenty-five, one twenty-three. And the, the limit set at one twenty-seven, I mean. About one point seven feet of clarity for, uh, the picture of water. I mean. How long is that going to take to fill up? I don't care if there's an empty, uh, eat, uh, area or a fixed end area. Uh, whatever's going to be there is that we feel the water is stopping. So there's really no way that that water's going to go. Um. Hello?
Mr. Hopkinson, you're on. They're not responding.
Say again?
Mr. Hopkinson, I believe the board does not have to respond, but they can hear you.
They don't have to respond. I'm asking.
Well, yeah, to be honest with you, you're breaking up very badly. Is everybody in the same, every, excuse me, Mr. Hopkinson, let me ask the board members. Can everybody understand what Mr. Hopkinson is saying? Yep.
I, I think I can hear what he's saying.
Well. Mr. Johnson, can you dialogue? Could you understand what Mr. Hopkinson is saying to us?
Yeah, I don't, I, I, I mean, I can make out what he's saying because partly because it's easy to fill in the blanks because it's the same thing he's been saying. Since the first time we started doing the hearings. I think it's still going to come down to, I don't. I don't disregard what he's saying. I'm just saying at this point, I think we're going to have to make a decision on what's presented to us. I don't think the information he's providing is any, anything new. He's commenting on what they continue to present. At some point, we're just simply going to have to make a decision about what we think about the project from what's been submitted. And what's been commented on. Um, a, a, as it is on any project that we have. I mean, we certainly have people who come in and disagree with what's presented. And what we may or may not do, but ultimately it comes down to us making a decision based on what's in front of it. So I feel like I know what Mr. Hopkinson's issues are and I know what the petitioner has submitted. So. I, I, I don't feel like I haven't heard. So I definitely believe I know what is issue though.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Ryder?
Uh, yeah. No, I, I, I do understand. Uh, Mr. This is for Mr. Hammer, for you, Mr. Chair. Um, Matt, when you did, um. Your, um, samples out there, what was the, what, what was groundwater at when you did your? Was it at one twenty-five?
Groundwater is at, um, one twenty-six.
One twenty-six. So, i- in, so you can understand Mr. Hopkins' concern. So we're, we're talking. We're talking a foot of difference here and I, I think, you know, to echo what Mr. Johnson said here is. And I hope Mr. Hopkins can, can hear this. Um, you know, we have to, we have to go with what the math is stating. Um, I'm still concerned, but. They're sitting here telling us that they have, Mr. Hopkinson, that they have a homeowners association. In place that will have annual maintenance that will allow you copies of the maintenance, uh, by going to town hall. Uh, through DPW requesting those. Um, and you'll also have, um. Recourse if your property does continue to, uh, if you have excess flooding within that area. Um, I, I do understand his concerns. Um, if I, you know, if I was the abutter, I would have concern. Uh, you know, there's no other way to change. The biggest thing here is Matt is. The lowest point on this property is the abutting parcel to Mr. Hopkinson. And, a- and that's a, that's a valid concern for him. And the reason you, you guys can't design the parcel to go any other way but to that low point. So. You know, you have to, uh, take his concerns. They're valid. And, you know, and as Mr. Johnson said, you can put those number in front of us and we have to go with those. And if the numbers, um, if, you know, if it comes back that Mr. Hopkinson's property does flood. He'll have recourse. And the unfortunate thing is the builder is going to be gone at this point. It will be the homeowners association that Mr. Hopkinson now will have to hire an attorney to, um. Take action on. And I think that's, that's a concern. So.
So, so, Mr., sorry to interrupt you, Eric, but, um, I just wanted, I want to take us back to the progression of what we have done. To specifically, uh. Help Mr. Hopkinson's concern was, you know, we, we brought in the swale to pick up more swale material. Swale to take some of the, uh, you know, the, the area behind the dwelling on lot one. We created, um, essentially a low basin area with the addition of these wick drains. And we provided, uh, that whole system to be operated and maintenance by the homeowners association. And, you know, that, that's doing everything we possibly can to the situation that's there. So we've been.
I understand that. I just, I'm just, I'm just expressing that where it was difficult for some of the board members to hear Mr. Hopkinson. And as Mr. Johnson stated, these are his concerns. So I think as the board, we need to listen to them. Um, I agree. You've done, um. There's some mechanisms for the mitigation of the water there. But yet there's still some concern. So, uh, I understand it's valid and, and as you've, and you've, you've stated as well, if these wick drains weren't there and. The water would end that way. You know what I mean? We know that's the low point on the property. And there could be contributing water off of Mr. Hopkins' property. But there's also contributing water coming off of the development. So I think, I hope. I hope that the wick drain system does work. I'm hoping that the calculations are in fact accurate. Um, based upon what you proposed. I hope that the, the soil, um, there will take this. Um, the subsurface soil there will mitigate some of this and that forbey will take over the excess. Um. And, and as Mr. Johnson stated, we can only go with the information that we have. And, and that's what we have to do. And, and that's what we have to do.
And, and remember, I think it's important to recognize that we don't have any control over what Mr. Hopkinson does on his property, but we do have complete control what happens on ours. Meaning, moving into the, okay, sir.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Delaney.
I believe it's having a problem with his computer, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Mr. Fratelli.
Well, I guess my only concern is, uh, we have to get this right somehow, some way. And, uh, I, I mean, what are we, what have we brought a third party in to make it a valid, uh, you know, determination as well? I don't know if that's something we could possibly do. I mean, we have, you know, Mr. Hammer saying one thing, we have Mr. Hardeman saying something else, we have this and that going on. I don't know if, uh, what the answer is, but I just, we know we need to get this right. So, I'm willing to give it a shot.
Well, this, Mr. Fratelli, I think what we should do is make sure that all, all these questions that Mr. Hardeman had are answered by Mr. Hammer. And, uh, that being said, when that's done, that should be the third party. The third party is the dialogue from them. That's it.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Andella, you have something you wanna say?
Mr. Chairman. Yes, Mr. Chairman. In the past, probably, I'll say two months ago, but maybe three months ago, Mr. Hardeman signed off on the project. He said the drainage is okay, no drainage problems. I understand he changed his letter the other day, added 15 more things, and we did the 15 things. So, the drainage hasn't changed since months ago, when, um, Mr. Ryder went out and saw Mr. Hopkinson, and Kevin checked everything.
That was a lot longer than three months ago.
It was a while ago, but I just wanna say, Mr. Hardeman already approved the drainage system once. So, I, I feel confident that he's gonna tell the board that he likes it again.
Right, we'll see.
I guess, I don't know how he can change his mind, but...
We'll see.
So, I just feel that, um, we started out, we made nine revisions. We changed and changed, changed, yeah, low impact drainage system. He ended up changing it to a standard system, pretty much. Um, so, I, I had to say my thoughts. I didn't say much in the whole process. So, I feel like we're coming to a closure soon. So, thank you for your time, Mr. Chairman and board members.
Thank you, Mr. Andella. Um, Mr. Mrs. Delaney, are you having any success?
I don't even see him, uh, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, they're on.
Oh, is he on? Okay, I didn't see him.
He's having a problem with his mute, he can't unmute his system or something, I'm not sure.
Can you hear me, Mr. Delaney? Wave your hand if you can hear us. I guess not. Well, um, Mr. Hopkinson, are you there?
Yes, I am, thanks.
Thank you. Did you hear everything that was said by the m- board members?
Yeah, I think so. Um, I, I disagree with your reaction. Um, yeah, I, I, it has the zoom account content of the Wednesday, so I don't have a provision. Uh, it's high, 126.3 of foot, if it's, that's the drain that's gonna have to scrub all the water. Um, but, um, I, I, I think that should be taken into consideration. Uh, I mean, but it floods up because of whatever leaves, or floods up because of, uh, ice and snow, or rain. And that takes water and puts it on my property. And by your own definition, 5.3.20, that can't happen. But it looks like it's gonna happen. Now, the forbey, that's with the, uh, wick drain. Um, I think it's a question of how that's gonna go. If you look it up, uh, they show a lot of wick grass and a lot of stones because of, uh, erosion. Is that how the, uh, the, 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 the?
Well...
I think that would be for Mr. Uh, uh, it would be for the, uh, engineer to, uh, speak to the, uh, subsurface in that forbey.
Right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just because, I mean, this, this hearing has gone on for, I don't know. I, I, I feel like I've had a couple of birthdays or something, I'm not sure.
Ten months.
But, but, but what I don't want people at home to get confused by, because I feel like if they're going to, if someone doesn't say it. We do not, cannot, will not approve a project in which the numbers were submitted to us that show that water is going to go onto somebody else's property. That is not what we're doing. We have the numbers that are telling us it will not happen. We have a feeling, right, I'm sorry, increase one. Yeah, I'm sorry, I apologize, I misspoke. There, an increase is not going to occur. So, we cannot approve a project, would not approve a project, cannot approve a project that shows that. The numbers submitted do not show that. The feelings of some, some, whether it be based on them running their own number, or whatever it is, is different than the numbers that have been presented to us. But they're going off what they think is going to happen, as opposed to what's been presented to us to make a determination on. You know, we can make that determination or not, that's up to us. But ultimately, I just don't want anyone at home to be confused by what's said, because we have numbers submitted to us that say that will not happen. Could it happen? I suppose. But we can't read into the future, and we can't, or at least I'm not gonna go against what's submitted. I just wanna make sure everybody knows that that's not what we do. We only do what the numbers tell us, and we would never approve a project where the numbers were being presented to show that that was gonna happen.
Well said, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you.
Uh, board members, anything, uh, Mr., unless you have something new to offer?
Hello? Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes. Yeah, it, it appears to me like you're, you're, you move away from your microphone when you're talking.
I just have my phone.
What's that?
I just have my, this is Hopkinson. I just, this is my phone.
Well, okay.
Okay, uh, again, with the wick drain, uh, we have all the calculations. I'm, I'm ensuring that the new calculations don't represent the 127 ground elevation with the, uh, 126 high water. That capacity now, they, they're probably coming high, and those wick drains now hold that capacity that, uh, that's gonna be there. Don't forget that water is coming from the, the, the house lot, in the back of the house lot, and possibly, um, drive away with the, 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 which is... Okay, get the call back now.
Mr. Okay, Mr. Mr. Hopkinson, that, that one point, can, Mr. Mr. Hopkinson. I don't think you can hea- can you hear me on your phone?
He can hear you. He, he can hear.
Mr. Hopkinson, please, you asked a question, I want Mr. Hammer to answer it. Don't go, don't, please don't go on. Mr. Hammer, can you have an answer to what his question was?
I believe his question is, is that, um, where water is standing right now, or does stand, is, is that an elevation that's higher than the groundwater elevation, I think is what he's saying, but I'm not exactly sure.
That's true.
What I'm saying, uh, Mr. Hammer, is that, uh, you have an elevation from the dam of the wick drain, 127. The high water mark is 126. So, now that gives a foot of capacity that that will bring into as the new calculation, because of 126, it's at 128. If the new calculation, it can attract that this is a 1 foot profit, a ground elevation for the wick drain.
So, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure what Mr. Hopkinson is saying. But what I can say is that when we dug a test hole next to this depression, we dug down through a thick layer of leaves and a thick loam layer, and then there's a fu- there's a sand layer beneath the loam layer. And then when you go down a couple feet, there's a restrictive layer underneath that. What we do know is when the water gets to that sand layer, the water is gonna move. And where the water does move to is actually towards Whipple Road. There's a huge deposit of sand layers as you venture from this site towards Whipple Road. And we know that from the, the extensive soil testing that we've done. We're extremely confident that when this water now has an unrestricted hydraulic connection to that sand layer be- beneath this 127 elevation, that once that water gets to that sand, it's gonna move. And if you go to, if anyone wants to go to the site, and if you go behind 18, the building at 181, and you go out behind where the power lines are, you're gonna see vast deposits of sand that we've discovered. And what essentially happens is the water is traveling that way, and once it gets to that sand, it now is unrestricted. What's happening now, today, is it's such a large leaf layer that the water doesn't have time to get to that layer beneath it because of all the leaf la- litter that's spread out in this back portion. And in fact, I went out there today and, cause now we're at the seasonal high groundwater state where things tend to be wet. And since we did a test pit adjacent to this, this leaf layer, we, we've actually provided a, you know, and a hydraulic, you know, point where the water can actually get to that sand layer now. But we're very confident when this area is now, um, um, established itself to have a full unrestricted access to the, the groundwater, we're confident that that groundwater is gonna be at that elevation 126.
So, Mr. Hammer, thank you for the explanation. It sounds, Mr. Mr. Hopkinson. Mr. Hopkinson. Mr. Hopkinson.
Yes?
Can you hear me?
Oh, yes.
Yes, please, don't interrupt. Please, don't interrupt. Yep, I was talking to Mr. Hammer. Mr. Hammer, I appreciate what you've done, it seemed your explanation is, uh, spot on. I appreciate that. That's very good. Um, what I would... I don't know how we're going to, um, solve the dilemma or the problem that Mr. Hopkinson thinks he has. But until such a time as, uh, two things have to happen. We still have to have a cover letter from Mr. Hardeman. Because the last thing that was done was your explanation, Mr. Hammer, which rightly so, probably, based on his questions of, of the 25th, I believe the 25th, no, the 17th, I'm sorry, the 17th.
Yeah.
So, you answered those questions, we have to get a cover letter from him, that understanding that what you're saying is, uh, all right by him.
Yep.
All right? So, that's where we stand. And at the same time, we will ask, um, I don't know who we're gonna ask. I guess, Mr. Hammer, I want you to give a written explanation, if you would, how this is going to work affect, effectively, or how Mr. Um, Hopkinson would be affected by this or not affected, realizing the fact that, as you and I both know, Mr. Johnson, he cannot have an increase in water. That's not to say God's not gonna deposit water down on his lot, and it's not gonna leave because of the, leave the area because of all the leaves in his yard. Or it could be anybody's yard, but in that case, it's, it's a dam. So, as, uh, Mr. Hammer was right, we can't go on his property to clean up his yard. And that's, that's, could be a problem for Mr. Hopkinson. So, um, board members, any other questions?
Yeah, so, Mr. Chairman, with that said, I'd like to make a motion to continue this to our next meeting, get some clarification, get answers, and we'll move on.
I, I agree with Mr. Fratelli.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm, in just in anticipation of, uh, resolving all the issues with Mr. Hardeman by the next meeting, to apply the, uh, requested, um, draft of the homeowners association with all the language that we, language that we discussed here tonight.
Yes.
Could we also, could we ask that in the, uh, that the, the director start the process of preparing the, uh, the terms and conditions of, of a, of an approval, uh, so that we could have them available for review at the next meeting, uh, in a, in a, resolving all these issues in the interim period.
All right. Let me ask you this, Mr. Plunkett, have all the waivers been erased?
The sidewalk.
Yeah, the sidewalk on one side of the, uh, of the way itself, and, uh, and we're agreeing to the, uh, you know, that there'll be another issue in terms of that length. How we're gonna come up with the figure, uh, you know, we'll wait to hear back from your determination as to how the town is looking to proceed. We'll have to, uh, go from there. Uh, you know, I'll, I'll defer to Mr. Hammer, but I believe that is the only waiver, is the waiver of the, uh, the sidewalk on one side. And I'll ask Matt to, uh, you know, correct me if I'm wrong there.
Okay, no, that's fine. Uh, Mrs. McGinty?
Could I ask Mr. Plunkett for something?
Yeah, right ahead, Mr. Johnson.
Mr. Plunkett, when you send the homeowners association agreement, would you mind just sort of highlighting the areas pertinent to what we were asking about? Otherwise, we're gonna get lost in an otherwise large agreement, trying to find what we're looking for.
All right, uh, is it that, you, do you want me to boldface it, or I don't know?
Underline, maybe? Would that work?
Underlines, okay, all right, yeah. As I know sometimes, doing the red line, but if you don't have the red, if you don't have the color...
Exactly.
Definitely, you can't see. So, I, 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 I'll, I'll do it bold and underline, just so there's no question as to what...
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Johnsons. Thank you, Mr. Plunkett. Mrs. McGinty, you understand how far we're going to be able to go on the special permit? Um, we have to wait for Mr. Hardeman to give us some cold, hard facts as to the figures for the sidewalk, for the one waiver that's, uh, been. So, um, we will address the waiver in the special permit. And, um, are there any terms and conditions you can put in there?
Um, so, yes, Mr. Um, Mr. Chairman, so, I am going to, um, finalize the draft conditions and ask the town engineer and the assistant town manager to review that.
Yep.
Um, and then submit the copy and the planning board packets for the next hearing.
Okay.
And then a copy of the waiver, which is just that one waiver.
Very good.
And, um, ask the town engineer, it sounds like we want the sidewalk calculation to be, um, calculated now. So, I'll ask him to do that as well.
I'll, and I'm going to talk to him, uh, hopefully tomorrow. Um, I'm not gonna be in town, but, um, I'll see if I can grab him on the phone and ask the questions that he knows I'm gonna ask him. And see if we can come to a, a fruition on, uh, how they come up with the figure. That's all. Thank you, Mrs. McGinty.
So, Mr. Chairman, I made the motion to continue.
Yes, what time?
7:15 being a good time, Miss McGinty?
Oh, I'll second that.
Is any chance I can speak before you adjourn?
I'm sorry?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, is any chance I can speak before you adjourn? I, I didn't finish.
No, no. At this time, we've, tonight, we've gone as far as we can go without checking those figures that we have with, uh, Mr. Hardeman.
I also have, I have to have...
No, no, Mr. Mr. Mr.
I have God or heels, I'd like to have this stuff. And I like to, about defending, at one point it was, uh, on and now it's off. And I'd like to have that, uh, any discussion, if that possible.
Right now, we have one hour left on our hearing process and we have four other functions to do. Um, we've been dealing with this subject for 10 months. Um, I would hope you and Mr. Hammer can come to a conclusion, um, one way or the other.
I did not come to a conclusion. That's why I was going to the board. I'm just asking, I know it's in the long process and it, and I, I hesitate, this is going for me, but it's going to be once it's placed in the ground, it just stays. And I think it's, you know, it's up to us to determine if that's safe possible. And I think that's what we're working for, uh, speaking, you know, the help.
I'm not sure if I can help you right now. I have to talk to Mr. Hardeman tomorrow.
Okay, about those issues too, in the forebait?
No, I'm not talking to him about the forebait. That's between Mr. Hammer and, and, uh, Mr. Hardeman. All right. We have a motion on the, we have a motion on the floor and seconded on the motion in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The pose.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Roll call, void, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, thank you. Yes. Mr. Frataya.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Delaney.
Aye.
Mr. Ryder.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Let's take a one minute break so we can straighten out our desks. Um, the next item on the agenda is 1023, 1029 East Street. And as I said, we're going to take a one minute break. All right, Brian?
Sure thing, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you.
Just so everybody knows, if I'm not mistaken, we're on break, but we're still on TV, just so everybody knows that.
And your mic's alive.
Thank you, Brian. I'm all set. Now, the petition is for 1023, 1029 East Street here.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, David Plunkett, uh, representing the applicant and in the office with me tonight is Mark Rocha, the, uh, principal of the, uh, the party that's acting as the petitioner. Also, Andy Street is present as the, uh, chief engineer on site. So Mr. Richard Cuco is, uh, on board as a consultant to the project.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Plunkett. Go ahead.
If you're offset, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Make a motion. Make a motion to waive the public reading.
So more, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought this, that's right. It's not a continuance. I apologize. Um, we have, just so I can read them off, we have a, uh, East Street Tucksbury LLC for a site plan special permit, use special permit, land disturbance permit, special permit. Thank you. And on the motion in favor, say aye. I'm waiving the reading of the public notice.
Aye.
Aye.
Second. On the motion in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Frataya.
Aye.
Mr. Delaney.
Aye.
Is, and Mr. Ryder.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Go right ahead, Mr. Street.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I may just give preliminary introduction overview of the project and the parties involved. Uh, Mr. Roach and the, and the Roach family has, uh, been a member of the Tucksbury business community for many, many years, uh, located currently on, uh, Main Street. Uh, this is now an opportunity for the family. This property, industrial zoned parcel of land, uh, was permitted back in 2007 for a development over 26,000 square feet. Uh, for the purposes of the Roach family and their two, and the businesses that will be bringing to the site, uh, this is the perfect opportunity to remain in the town of Tucksbury. Uh, this is a situation where the town was actually, uh, you know, looking for the current business operation on Main Street to find some place to relocate just because of the vision for the Route 38 corridor. And that over the years, you know, it's a situation where this would be better suited for a heavy industrial zone. So they're bringing their, uh, American gutter business and also the JR transport business to this site. This would be significantly less of use of the property that was envisioned during the, uh, 2007 permitting. And again, it, it allows, uh, just as a, an example, we had to go before the DBA for the, uh, site at, uh, Main Street. And at the hearing, uh, we asked some of the other members of the business community to submit this support for the, uh, for the family. And I believe we had about 20 speakers, uh, from the business community just talking about, you know, what a great, uh, uh, you know, part of that community, the, the family is. And, you know, it speaks volumes to get that type of support. Great opportunity for the town to have a business that's been in, in town for so long to be able to relocate as proposed here. And, uh, I think that you'll see when Mr. Street gives his presentation, it's, it's a great location for them to go and it'll be a perfect site for the relocation business. So then I'll, I'll turn it over to Andy to just present the, uh, details of the, of the site.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Good.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman and, uh, other board members. Uh, just for the record, Andy Street, civil design consultants. Uh, if it's all right, Mr. Chair, can I share my screen?
Yep, absolutely.
So the, the site itself is actually two parcels, uh, 1023, 1029 East Street. In total, it's about 12 acres of land, uh, 575-ish feet of frontage along East Street. Um, the site itself right now is, is really vacant, uh, some, some, I guess you could call it grass, but it's poorly maintained, grass is dirt areas, gravel areas. And the site is surrounded, well, the development area, I should say, is surrounded by a retaining wall, um, with just beyond that, uh, wetlands really taking up the majority of the, the real piece of the site. Uh, this, this site has a, has a history, um, which I'm, I'm sure the board is, is aware of in some capacity, but there was some environmental concerns, some contamination from previous owners that was found on site. Uh, that was, has been remediated over, over years of, of work with a variety of, uh, environmental consultants, um, and kind of, uh, part of the end result was to install an AUL, which is defined by this, uh, dark dash line. And what that, that is, that's an activity use limitation, uh, a document that essentially specifies, uh, what can and can't be done on the site now that there has been work to, uh, remediate the, uh, environmental concerns. And that wall that I mentioned is essentially holding up a cap that was put in place at the recommendation of environmental consultants, uh, reviewing the types of contaminants and, and how best to, um, uh, make the site usable again. So what we're left with is a, is a capped area at relatively the same elevation. And again, that wall essentially wraps around the, uh, majority of the, um, the developable area, um, with a portion of the development, as you'll see, potentially taking place just outside of the A well.
Good.
Uh, so the, the development itself, and I'll get it in some more detail about what's, what's taking place, but, but the idea is that it's, it's three phases. The main phase is shown in the green here. This is phase one. Uh, that'll contain the, the new building, uh, two curb cuts, parking spaces for the, um, for the business operations, um, and then stormwater systems and utilities which will connect to East Street. Uh, phase two would be to this red area here. It is a third curb cut that will provide access to a narrow parking lot here, uh, and then eventually connect into phase one. So this will also be paved. It'll have its own stormwater system, uh, some grading. There'll be no other utilities that, that'll structure, no structures in that area. Um, and then phase three is this blue area here. So one thing I didn't mention about phase one is this gets paved by the building, but there's a gravel parking area in the back. So that's part of phase one. Under phase three, the idea would be to pave this gravel area. Um, and all of this, I, you know, we were here, I think it was November. Um, this, talking about this conceptually, and these phases have remained the same. And for all intents and purposes, the, uh, the building, the layout, all of that remained the same from that plant too. But just as kind of a recap, a refresher, uh, this blue area would get paved, um, and have its own stormwater system to handle that runoff towards the back of the site here. So getting into a little more detail about the, uh, site itself, this is a, uh, 3200 square foot building. So, you know, fairly modest, especially considering the size of the, uh, available land to build on, 50 by 64, um, access through these two curb cuts here, um, with the majority of the parking surrounding this, it'll all be paved. And the majority of the parking is your traditional, uh, nine and a half by 18 and a half, but there are 16 spaces shown, uh, down towards the bottom of the page that are, um, larger sized, oversized for, for larger vehicles. And those would be 10 feet by 24 feet. Uh, the, the, uh, sidewalks are provided along East Street. Uh, the site will be gated, there's a fence, a retaining wall, a short two foot retaining wall and a fence that comes along the front. And, um, some landscaping will be placed up towards the, uh, the street here to, uh, both shield the site, uh, from the street and also to add some, some carrots or anything like that. So it's, it's really, uh, one of the, uh, the applicant's priorities is, is, um, shielding this site. So that's the intent behind the shore retaining wall with the fence and then, um, some plant as well will, will help to that. Uh, the, the area, uh, there's a, a small loading bay here. I know we discussed this at the conceptually, th- this is a, it'll be a garage door, but the intent isn't for, um, frequent drop off and pickup. It's more of a, or storage of vehicles. It's, it's, they will get some, some supplies and things like that. But really the intent is that the vans will be here, the employees will show up, they will, um, get their assignment, get their vehicle and then leave for the day. Uh, but this garage door here, so it's not an overnight storage type situation, the, the vehicles will be parked in the parking area. Uh, in total, we have 61 standard parking spaces. And then we have, uh, 16, as I mentioned, oversized truck spaces here. Uh, regarding grading, so one, one of the challenges we have with this site is, is this, uh, the, the past environmental history and, uh, the cap itself. So we can't cut the cap. Uh, the, the cap elevation needs to be maintained, if not, um, uh, raised up on so we can go raise the cap, add some more fill material, um, but we can't, we can't cut the cap. Um, so in, in order to make this work, what we've done is we've got kind of a three-part, uh, stormwater system. So phase one, as I mentioned, is this, the gravel area in the back, the entrance drives, the building, the parking and this kind of dotted hatch area here that you can see to this, the tops and the bottoms and the entrances, that will be previous pavement. So we'll capture the runoff, uh, in there and we will, uh, treat it and infiltrate it back into the ground. Um, for phase two, it has its own standalone system, which is a, uh, subsurface system. There's a catch basin and a manhole, and that will again be captured and infiltrated back into the ground. And then, uh, phase three, should that get paved, we also have a subsurface system here where water will be captured and infiltrated there. So, um, really the intent was, uh, if, right now, the intent is really just to build phase one so that all the, um, applicant will need to do is construct the stormwater for that phase. And then if phase two gets built, it has its own separate system that can be built and maintain with phase three. Um, a- as of now, we've been, we've had some discussion with the, um, the DPW. We did do some preliminary soil testing out here. It wasn't witnessed by the DPW, um, but that's what we use to base our, our design. We're expecting pretty consistent conditions out here. We know the cap is consistent. Um, we're expecting pretty similar, uh, conditions as far as groundwater and soil types of things. That's kind of what we applied, but, um, we're in the works, um, working with an LSP to get the appropriate paperwork to allow for digging in this capped area, particularly for the course pavement. And that's hopefully happening in, um, in short order. Uh, so, you know, I just briefly mentioned the NLP, but we have par corporation has been retained by the, by the applicant to, um, one, provide guidance about the infiltration systems and, and things like cutting the cap and what we can and can't do to, to make sure, uh, the site, you know, remains, um, environmentally remediated as is today. Um, and his opinion was that infiltration is okay as long as it's just not focused on one particular point, I think was more or less his, his word. So he's reviewed this design and is in agreement that it's appropriate for, for the area. Um, and, and the LSP will also, especially as we head towards construction, even soil testing, providing things like a health and safety plan and a soil management plan that will, um, that will, uh, kind of guide workers and make sure everybody's safe as they, as they work on this site. So I think, um, just as kind of procedurally, we're in front of the conservation commission, we'd open the process with them. As I mentioned, wetlands are really many places right behind this retaining wall with buffer zones, yeah, covering the portion of the, uh, development. So we'll continue to work with them to address their concerns. Um, we've, we've received a preliminary letter from, uh, Ms. McGinty out of the planner's office that will, we have no problems with and, um, we'll certainly be addressing as we move forward. Uh, have not received the DPW letter. As I mentioned, we've, we've had a little bit of back and forth talking about some preliminary concerns, but, uh, when we receive that letter, we'll certainly hopefully roll all of them, including with the comments from this board into, into the next submission. Um, and then permitting, you know, we, I think we talked a little briefly, but we, we have the site plan special permit, the use special permit, this is being permitted as a contractor's yard at, at the, um, uh, from preliminary discussions with the, uh, building inspector. We're also requesting a special permit for the building height to exceed 35 feet in the heavy industrial district. Um, and then a special permit for a fence with a height greater than six feet. And that, that one, we're really requesting because while the fence that I mentioned along the frontage is six feet, the fence itself is, it's sitting on a two foot wall. We just want to make sure, um, that that's acceptable and we have the proper permitting. Um, and then last, that, we have three waivers here. There's a, a waiver for the, um, uh, parking setback that the parking here is too close to the property line, um, for the zone. So we're requesting a waiver to install that. Um, the, as I mentioned, the entire parking area is paved, there's no interior islands. Um, so we're requesting a waiver from providing that interior parking, um, that's required. And then also a waiver from the formal landscape plan. We're showing some, you know, general plantings and things along the street. We have the fence, um, but as far as the site goes, the goals for the site actually not to be seen, you know, it's a little different than, uh, some of the multifamily projects that I'm often here with. So, uh, those are our three waivers. Um, Dick, if you'd like to add anything to that, you're certainly welcome to. If not, um, I think all three of us are here to answer any questions the, the board might have.
Thank you, Andy.
Yeah. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dick Cuco here. Um, basically.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dick Cuco here. Uh, basically, um, the, the, this site on, is a little unusual sign. Like we're asking for the waivers on the landscaping, but you're not going to be able to see inside the site, uh, from the street. Uh, the applicant, um, wants to keep it that way. He likes to be able to have the security for his vehicles. So you have a twofold, uh, purpose for the, for the, uh, so let's call it the fortress. Is that, uh, it's aesthetically pleasing and it provides a lot of security, uh, for the applicant. Um, yeah, at least the ladders on trucks and so forth and so on. You know, as Andy mentioned, we weren't sure about whether we needed a waiver or not for the six-foot fence. But, uh, we've determined that having the fence right at the sidewalk with the plows going up and down E Street would really kind of compromise the fence. So by putting in the two-foot, um, uh, block, you know, lock block retaining wall, which has a decorative face, uh, out towards E Street, then being able to construct a wall on top of that will preserve the, the fence, um, you know, from being damaged by snowplows and, uh, balmadeers or whatever happened to be going by to, uh, to do the sidewalk. Um, I also wanted to just touch on the fact that the reason that, um, we're, we're showing it in three phases, but trying to permit it is one, because, because of the environmental concerns and because of the fact that we have to have a LSP on board in order to facilitate the project, it just made more sense to have everything in one a- application. Everybody knows what they're supposed to do. When the construction takes place, they'll be supervised by the LSP. A conservation will be, uh, you know, part of that, uh, proposal. And so we can keep moving forward, uh, should it, should the time, uh, commit for us to build this sooner than later. But, um, and if anybody has any questions about what happened with the capping and when everything, uh, you know, I think, uh, some of you are aware of it, but if not, uh, I got quite a history on this and I'd be glad to share it with you. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Cuco. Um, board members, uh, Mr. Fratella.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, just a couple of questions I had, uh, from Mr. Street and, um, I know, and Mr. Cuco as well. I know you said it's a three-phase project. Um, we have any idea as far as how long, you know, uh, the entire phase may be? I mean, I'm just concerned about the residents that are over there that have to deal with the construction and the noise and the contractor vehicles out there and constantly, constantly, constantly. And then, and then what, what about them, you know? So I don't know if you have an answer for that?
Well, as you know, Mr. Fattia, the permit is only good for a certain period of time. Um, so we'd either be coming back and ask for extension. I mean, obviously my client would love to be able to do it all at once. That means his business is thriving and doing very, very well.
Yeah.
But, uh, you know, we, we have to, um, you know, we have to safeguard the, uh, the environmental concerns here. Now, as far as the, uh, the construction of phases two and three, those would be relatively quick. So let's say we did it, uh, two years out. It would, it's not, it wouldn't take nearly as long as it would to do the first part of the project because, you know, the sidewalks will already be in, the fences will already be in, the walls will already be in, and all the bases for the work will be in. And there'll also be plenty of, uh, room on site for the contractors to, uh, store equipment, material, and, uh, marshal up all the stuff that they need during the construction. So,
Sure.
I don't think it'll be, i- it's, it's, like I said, the building and all that's going to take longer. But phase, actually phase three probably only take about a week.
Yeah. So, well, you, you answered one of my questions as far as, uh, when you want to do the whole project in phases. I mean, the sidewalk would be in phase one completely?
Yes.
Okay. So one of my concerns is as I'm driving down E Street, uh, I, I, I'd see a long segment of fence. Uh, what are we talking for distance on that, uh, space between driveways?
Uh, I'm not sure what that is, Andy. Do you have it?
Between the driveways here?
It's probably two.
It's right at the regulation. I believe it's two hundred.
Two hundred feet, I believe.
Two hundred feet. Yeah, yeah.
The rea- the other reason, Mr. Fattia, for this is, uh, because they lock the gates, um, you know, at night. So if they, if they're driving up here and if we had the gate out on the street and they pull up early in the morning, now they're blocking traffic. So we, we get, we get the gates set back so that when they come in, I'm, I don't know why I'm pointing, Andy, on my screen. It doesn't show, but, but anyways, you could see that, that, uh, that's so that the first person in in the morning can pull off the street safely. Uh, you get the snow out of the way and open the gates up. So, uh,
Yeah.
Then, um, uh, it's just, uh, it's, it's a security reason and it's the preference of the, uh, of the owner to have a nice, neat, clean fence and wall, uh, to keep their property secure.
So I know there was some questions about traffic on the, uh, at the, at the site. And, um, I would just, so the process is the vehicles for the gutter cleaning stay on site. People come in, drive in, grab their vehicle, and then get their assignment and they go, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So, I'm sorry.
So that means traffic in, traffic out, you know, a, a good portion of the morning to get on their way, right? Correct? And then the same thing in the afternoon, uh, returning from work. Uh, you know, leaving the vehicle overnight and then leaving with their car, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
We're only talking twenty-four trucks.
Yeah.
So, and ninety percent of that traffic is going to come out of the site and turn right.
Yes.
Basically, the only time they would be going left is if they were cleaning gutters in Tuxbury.
Right.
But the majority of their work, um, they go up, uh, ninety-three, four ninety-five, Route Three. Uh, the, one of their big target areas is Allington Lexington area. So, um, you know, I saw the letter that came in from, from Inabutter. That's, that's about a half to three quarters of a mile away. And so there wouldn't be trucks going that way. But, uh, they have twenty-four, uh, working trucks. And the big thing to remember here, Mr. Fattia, is this is a two to three month a year business.
Sure.
They're not cleaning gutters in June, July, and August. They're not cleaning them in January, February, March, and April. So, uh, twenty-four trucks, people coming in, people going out. Uh, this is probably the most benign use of a property this size for traffic that I've ever encountered in my fifty years of, of doing this type of work. So.
Sure. Well, that was one of my questions was how many vehicles? And it's, it's, it's a minimal amount of vehicles in and out. I mean, a minimal amount of trucks that leave. And, uh, it's not a, you know, a, a large, large complex. And we're all, I'm all in favor of keeping the business in Tuxbury. You know, you know, I mean, he's been around town for a long time and we want to keep him here. So I want to do as much as we can for the gentleman and, uh, make sure it's, um, it's in compliance. That's all. So, but, uh, so I'm all set, Mr. Chairman. But I mean, uh, you know, I like the plan and like the idea and the concept of keeping the, keeping the commercial entity in town and, um, uh, we'll see how it goes. So.
Yeah, one, one other point to follow up on that, Mr. Fattia, is that, uh, unlike other businesses, people don't come in here. You know, so we don't have like consumers or the general public coming in and out of the site. So,
Right.
That's a big help too.
Sure. Great. Thank you, Mr. Cuco.
Hey, Mr. Fratella. Mr. Delaney. Mr. Delaney.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right. First of all, I think the, the building has a look to it that will make it, that really doesn't even make it look like a commercial building. I like the project all in all. Uh, you know, they're going to do the landscaping. You're going to go to, do the trees. So it's private. There's only so many vehicles. So in, like Mr. Cuco said, it, their business is probably like three, three, maybe four times a year, uh, four months a year. Uh, I guess I'm all set with this. I don't see any problems with this at all.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Delaney. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, one thing I was, I'd ask if you could, is it possible to get, uh, uh, another sheet with renderings of what it would look like from in front and then coming up or up and down, um, E Street for a view of what it looked like with the fence in front and the built, like how it'll look from the street? Um, because I think we have a lot of talk about the fence. And obviously it's going to be a pretty large fence and obviously that's how you need to have the property set up. But what that would look like to folks driving on E Street, I'd be curious to see what that's going to look like so that we know that the fence that we're going to have for the property is something that will be aesthetically pleasing. I mean, the pictures of the rendering for what I guess would be the inner workings of the site is great. But I mean, your, your point was that the inner workings of the site are actually going to be shielded. So all, most of that, other than the trees, you're not going to see anyways. You'll see some of the building, I presume, um, depending on where you're looking from. But I think a, a, a good look at what it will look like with the fence in front, um, would be, would be helpful.
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay. And then, um, I, I think, uh, sort of echoing, I guess, everybody else, which is, you know, uh, this is a, this is a heavy industrial site. Um, I know we did have, you know, one of butter comment, but I think you've got to keep in mind, this isn't like, this site didn't just get dropped in the area. Everyone who lives there, has moved there and whatnot, is aware that they live in an area that's right next to industrially zone sites. Um, we, we've had other industrial projects come into town. I'm not sure you're going to get one that's going to be less, uh, problematic to an area that abuts a residential area than this. It's, it's a, it's a partial use throughout the year, um, in terms of its high demand. Um, it's shielded. Um, you know, it, it's not, it's not, it's not a, a, uh, a use that uses big, you know, eighteen-wheeler trucks rolling in and out of it. Um, so I, I, you know, even weighing this against what else could potentially go there, while there will be more cars coming in out or trucks, whatever, you know, that's true. But that's really a byproduct of the fact that this is a heavy industrial site. That is potentially going to happen on that type of a site. And I think this is about as good as we're going to get, um, on this kind of a site in that area so close to ninety-three and four ninety-five that isn't even more onerous. So I, I, I don't have any issues with what's, what's here today. Just, if I could just see those renderings, I think I'll be in good shape. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Uh, Mr. Ryder.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I will have to agree with Mr. Johnson. Uh, a, a rendering would be helpful. Um, as Mr. Fratella brought up, just a, uh, uh, two hundred feet of kind of white wall there. Um, just concerned on how that would look. Uh, have you considered potentially breaking it up, uh, with some potential, some pillars that the gates kind of break it up at all, Mr. Cuco? Just so it just doesn't look like a big, long, white wall. Um, give it a somewhat better appeal. I agree with Mr. Uh, Johnson. It is a commercial site. Um, yeah, everyone is aware of what could go there. But I think if we can make it somewhat a little more appealing, um, as you're driving down, would be helpful. Um, and as far as the internals, uh, you know, I understand what you're looking for. Uh, it would be helpful if you could, um, as other members ask for a somewhat of a timeline um, on what your project, uh, the overall project would be. You know, obviously, uh, not asking for a month by month, but you know, just an overall, Dick, what you think at the end, how long before the entire project is completed?
We'll, we'll, we'll try to get you an answer. Uh, so, um, so basically, um, you know, we might be able to do some, like every so many sections, do a pie last or, uh, you know, something to, to make it not look like they're going to blow revelry any day, any minute now.
Exactly. You know what I mean? I think that rendering, I think if you could put that on the rendering, Dick, that would be helpful.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Other than that, I appreciate that.
Good comment.
Thank you.
Very good, Eric. Thank you. Um, thank you, Mr. Cuco. Um, Mr. Delaney.
You've already called with me, sir.
Mr. Chairman, you're, you're the last.
You're the last one.
You're the last one.
I only have one question. Andy, this might, um, the, the easiest question. Is there a chance that you can, um, when they designed the second floor of the building with the offices and conference room, um, they put the doorway from outside on the gable end, on that gable end of the building? Uh, that's all you s- that's what you're going to be seeing when you're driving down the street, down E Street?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I may. I did a little cross-section profile.
Yes.
And all you'll see is the roof of that building.
Oh.
Unless you, unless you go into the swamp. You, you have, in other words, you have to, on traveling on either side of E Street.
Yeah.
Uh, we actually, you know, uh, our client asked the same question. And, uh, uh, I, I didn't mean to cut you off, but I knew where you were going. So, so we did a profile and your eye line, uh, goes, uh, up and it, over the building. And if anything, you might see a little bit of the peak of the gable.
Okay. Thank you. You took care of it. Very good, Richard. Thank you. Andy, you bailed out.
How did I do? Pretty well? Yeah.
Yeah, you did. Excellent, excellent. Um, all right. Um, Mr., uh, and I'm all set. Uh, Brian, is there anybody on the phone?
We have no callers at this point, Mr. Chairman.
All right. And I've read the numbers, so hopefully they, they heard it. Um.
So, Mr. Mr. Chairman, uh, if I may, um, considering the fact that we have a lot of open ends, um, I'd like to make a motion to continue this hearing until, um, I think it's seven twenty on, uh, on the twelfth of April. Is that correct?
Well, let's ask into that.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, seven twenty is the next available slot.
Yep. Let me just, I'm just waiting. I don't want to get anybody cut off from the outside. No one, Brian?
No callers, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you. Mr. Fratella, you have a motion?
Motion to continue. We have a lot of open ends, uh, still coming.
I know that. Ian, has that been seconded?
Second.
So on the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I propose the ayes have it. Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Ryder?
Aye.
Mr. Fratella?
Aye.
Mr. Delaney?
Aye.
Here goes aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda. Eighteen hundred Main Street continued from, uh, March eighth includes the traffic discussion for Tuxbury Realty Ventures. And Mr. Casey, and are you alone or do you have other, someone else?
Uh, Mr. Soli is here as well.
Oh, okay. Oh, there he is. Okay. Very good. You have the floor, gentlemen.
Good evening, members of the, of the board. Uh, for the record, my name's Kevin Soli. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Massachusetts with Soli Engineering. Um, with me here this evening is Casey Birch from my office. So, uh, after the last hearing, we received some additional comments from the third party peer reviewer. And then, uh, last week, we did provide a formal response, uh, to those comments in addition to the comments that we received from town staff. Um, so with that, we submitted a formal letter, a revised narrative, revised plans, and some revisions to the traffic study as well. So, um, so I'm going to let Casey run through a lot of the plan changes that we made. And then I'll be able to talk about some of the, uh, traffic, um, uh, analysis that we submitted in response to, uh, the peer reviewers' comments. And then we'd be happy to answer any other questions that the commission may have.
Very good. Thank you.
All right. Uh, for the record, again, my name is Casey Birch and I'm a civil engineer, civil engineer for Soli Engineering. Uh, yes, I'll go over the, the site plan changes that came out of the comments. Um, one of the biggest ones, uh, was potential queuing issues, um, in the egress site drive. Uh, that could be, that could potentially back up into the pole movement, uh, site drive in front of the store. Uh, to alleviate this, we provide, we widened the egress lane from seventeen to twenty, so three feet wider with two ten-foot, um, uh, egress lanes to double stack, um, in this area. Uh, because of this, uh, we are required to go in front, uh, to get a permit for the, an access permit for mass DOT, which we are currently, um, in the process of doing now. Um, and that only provides about thirty square feet of disturbed area in addition to. Another modification that we had, um, the ADA parking spaces, uh, which they require to be ten feet wide. We made that change and, uh, modified the detail per the town engineer's comments. Um, we provided an intersection site distance line that clearly shows the limits of the driver's view. Uh, we also added a note to the plan that, uh, says all signs landscaping and other features located within the site triangle. Shall be designed, installed and maintained not to exceed the two point five feet in height. Uh, snow windrows were located within the site triangle, um, do not exceed three and a half feet in height. Or that would otherwise inhibit a sight line, um, shall be promptly removed. So, but that, that note was added along with the ISB as well. There was mention of bicycle racks, which we did have in our application previously. It is kind of hard to see, so I, I, I just wanted to call it out to the commission's, uh, and the board's attention. Um. There are two racks located by the concrete patio area. Uh, these two racks provide an, um. Enough for, for bicycle, um. Uh, stacking. Uh, another comment that, uh, they had, they, um, the peer reviewer had concerns regarding the circulation, um, mainly the. The right turn, potential right turn into the access one way. Uh, so we provided a no right turn sign in this location and two do not enter signs, uh, located. Uh, at the end of the access. Uh, this would better, um, circulate the traffic to. Go to the left instead of potentially going to the right. Uh, they also had, uh, comments regarding loading. They just wanted a little more clarification. Uh, so we updated our narrative to provide that. It, the coffee shop will receive deliveries via backhouse access door, um, proposed on the northern side. Delivery vehicles, uh, SU forty or smaller will maneuver the site, unload and unload merchandise within the biopath. And the striped island adjacent to the drive-through. Uh, the loading operations will occur, uh, daily. Um, they most likely will be done on peak, off-peak hours. Uh, to avoid disturbance with the drive-through operations and all merchandise will be offloaded via hand trucks and, um, portable dollies. So, uh, uh, we're hoping that, uh, clarifies, um, some things regarding the loading. And then the landscape plan, they just, uh, we, we modified to include notes that state shrubs and hedges shall be at least two feet in height at, at the time of planting. And have a spread of at least eighteen inches and a note that states evergreens shall be a minimum eight feet in height at the time of planting. Um, in addition to the peer review comments and the town engineer and planner comments, uh, we also took. Uh, into consideration the comments the planning board had at the last hearing. And one of the biggest ones was to provide an eight foot wide gravel path. Uh, we provided up to the property line and our client intends to work with the neighboring property owner. To have this gravel path continue until it reaches the parking area, um, to the neighboring properties. That way it provides connectivity for any pedestrian, uh, walkers that may, any pedestrians that may be parked in the adjacent, um, property. We want, they wanted to see, the peer review wanted to see some truck turning figures, so we provided those. Uh, the fire, fire department wanted to see, uh, the lot of truck movement. Um, so these are. The truck movements that, uh, for the fire truck that will maneuver the site. Uh, this was actually designed per the fire department, um, uh, specification. Uh, this is a delivery truck, uh, same, same maneuver, uh, would park here, unload, as mentioned earlier, and then exit the site. Um, this is a trash, trash truck, uh, front loader, um, showing the maneuver, maneuver to pick up. It, at the dumpster pad area in the northern corner and then leaving the site. And this is our passenger vehicle, uh. Stop turning movement. So that was provided, and that was included in the submission as well. And then I just wanted to quickly go over, I'm, I'm sure the planner will do this, but, uh, just to go over the. The waivers that we are requesting. We provided a waiver request letter. Uh, we modified it to include four of the waivers. The first one is a zoning bylaw section five, uh, five thousand two hundred and twenty-two H, uh. Where it states directional markers such as arrows and entrance and exit markers shall not exceed one square foot. Uh, we, uh, these arrows here do exceed them. Um, these are tenant requirements, required arrows. So we are asking for a waiver to, um, for these painted pavement arrows to be bigger than the one square foot. Uh, the second waiver we're requesting, actually, I need to examine two. We actually provided the waivers on the, um, the plan as well. Um, is section five, four, two, one, where it states no off-street parking areas shall be located. Um, within one foot of the property line, within twenty feet of the property line abutting a street right-of-way. Or in any required yard adjacent to the residential or institutional use. Uh, the project plans to maintain and utilize the existing front parking space. Um, non-conforming area. We, in, we're just planning to re-stripe as needed and, um, resurface as needed, but, uh. We are planning, we are hoping to maintain the parking as is in the front. And so we are requesting a waiver for that. The third waiver is, uh, section five, four, two, two. Where it states that the sidewalks along all public ways to which the site abuts and must, um, be connected to sidewalks, especially ours within the site. Provide safe access to the entrance. Um. So Kevin, I, I'm going to let you speak to this a little, but, um. We, we originally were not planning to put a sidewalk there, but we, we do, we are potentially reconsidering that. Considering on Friday, we received the, um, the, the cost, um. From this, uh, the town engineer and, um. Kevin, do you want to? Uh, continue with?
Sure, yeah, so. Sure, Case, I can, I can pick it up from here. Thank you. Um, just to.
Thank you.
The last waiver actually, which was on here, which actually is one I don't even think we actually need. Um, had to do with the scale of the plans not exceeding one inch equals forty. We're actually one inch equals twenty. So we don't need, we don't actually need a waiver for that, I don't believe, Casey. Um, because we're, uh, closer details than what is required. Um, but, but having to do with the, the last waiver that Casey mentioned regarding the sidewalk across the property frontage, as discussed at the last hearing. Um, we were, you know, the, the big thing that we're trying to do with this application is really where it's an adaptive reuse of a former bank building. And we're trying to minimize the amount of disturbance and, um, uh, site activity to allow for the proposed use to kind of come in as, uh, with, with least disruption to the site as possible. Um, what we discussed at the last hearing with regard to the sidewalk was proposing a fee, uh, toward, or, uh, contribution towards the sidewalk fund. Rather than actually constructing the sidewalk. I think the commission was generally supportive of that and that was because at the time, we didn't believe we were going to have to go to the DOT for any access permit. Um, in, in reviewing the comments from the, uh, traffic engineer who I believe is here, which is great, so we're going to be able to have a conversation regarding this. Um, there were some concerns raised about the potential queuing from our exiting driveway. And those queuing, those queues extending, um, past or, or from Main Street all the way back and potentially blocking the egress for the drive-through itself. Um, we were actually, based on our analysis, it was, it was pretty close. It wasn't exactly there. Um. Uh, it was just before the exit, but one of the things that we did to address that concern is, as Casey mentioned, we're now proposing to widen our egress lane. To provide sufficient width to, um, for, uh, both a left-turning vehicle and a right-turning vehicle to approach that exit driveway. Which actually reduces the queues, so we have, um, some additional, uh, storage and depth. Um, so that we would not, uh, have a, have an impact to anybody exiting that drive-through lane. Um, but with that, since we are providing some additional width for our driveway, we'll now have to go pursue an access permit from DOT. Um, so since we're now going to the DOT, uh, we, we, we would have, we would actually be, uh, happy to probably install that sidewalk as part of. Um, that access permit application, uh, simply to avoid the need to have to contribute to a fee and we can just include that in what we're doing with our, uh, egress driveway modifications. Um, and we have just, uh, started that dialogue with the Mass DOT about that process and we'll be, we'll be, uh, going forward that in, 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 in normal course. Um, you know, hopefully if the commission sees the rest of this application favorably. Um, you know, we did get a lot of good comments from, um, um, from Vanest and, and I want to thank you for that. We, we got them on the sixteenth of March and we submitted them back on the eighteenth, so we were, uh, working feverishly trying to. Uh, get all our responses in so we can be prepared for this hearing. I'm just going to touch on, on some of these. There were some, uh, you know, uh, questions on the study area. I think we provided a good, good, um, adequate information in terms of why we, um, studied the intersections that we did. They asked for the raw data count. We provided that raw data count as part of our traffic study. There were requests for accident analysis on both our driveway. And the surrounding intersections. We provided that information from, uh, in courts of Mass DOT. Um, and, and I will say that, you know, there is not a, uh, uh, any significant traffic accident history in this area of the proposed site. Or the exiting driveways or incoming driveways for the site. There, we, we provided a discussion on the public transportation services that are available in the area. Um, we discussed the accident data. From a trip generation standpoint, um, this is something that I do want to discuss. Uh, so the applicant, or the peer reviewer requested or suggested that we provide trip generation rates based on the gross area of the entire building. Um, we, we, we don't agree with, with that as an approach because from an operation standpoint, this use is, the, uh, standard Starbucks. Uh, is developing twenty-one hundred and fifty square feet facilities. And, um, this site is, is an adaptive reuse of a larger building that they want to take, uh, that they want to occupy and operate out of. But they don't need any more than twenty-one hundred and fifty square feet in order to operate their prototype. And in fact, um, you know, because we're trying to minimize the disruption, we're, we're simply proposing to. Um, you know, retrofit the existing building. They're taking a little bit larger area than they normally would at about twenty-nine hundred square feet. We actually included all of that area in our trip generation calculations, even though if, you know, if, uh, if. Uh, economics didn't come into play, they would have just torn this down and built a brand-new building. Thankfully, they didn't need to do that because the building's there. We don't need to be as disruptive as that would, that would be. Um, so we're, so we, uh, we didn't include the overall growth floor area. Now, as we discussed at the last hearing, there's about nine hundred and some odd square feet in the rear that used to be, again, this used to be a bank of vaults back there. Um, and there's other area where it's really, it's really not really viable for any other potential users. So it's really just kind of excess surplus space. They'll probably use it for storage. They may use it for additional break rooms. And actually, one of the components of the, of the TDM and, uh, uh, analysis is that, that they actually provide some additional rooms. So they can provide a break room and things like that for, for, uh, employees of, of the coffee shop. So we, we do think and we still believe that the trip generation that we provide is adequate and is appropriate given the use. Because again, they, they're only operating with, you know, their, their normal stores that were twenty-one hundred and fifty square feet. So we think that our, uh, proposal is, um, is appropriate from a trip generation standpoint and that excess space isn't really necessary. Or, and it wouldn't be indicative of the traffic flows or generation that would be anticipated from this use. The, we provided, uh, some more information on the weekday daily trip and breakdown, uh, the trip and rates we use. Um, uh, there was some discussion on the pass-by trip rates and we did follow standard, uh, traffic engineering methodologies. And, and the DOT, Mass DOT recommendations for this, for those pass-by trips. Um, so we do think our analysis is, is, um, applicable and conservative from a traffic standpoint. Um, we made some adjustments in our distribution based on the existing, uh, flow of traffic and the direction of traffic. Um, so we're now, uh. Uh, fifty-five percent originate from the north and then forty-five percent originate from the south. So we made those adjustments based on, uh, the comments from the peer reviewers. Um, we did provide a more detailed analysis and breakdown of the total driveway trips and the total new network trips on the, on, on the, uh, uh, analysis. Or in the network part of our analysis. Um, our conclusion is still the same, that this is predominantly a, a, a pass-by generated, uh, use. And the surrounding area intersections, um, shouldn't have an adverse impact from, um, our proposed, uh, operations. Uh, I think our analysis demonstrates that. Um, again, we did provide, widened our drive, it provide those, that space for those two egress lanes, which will have, provide some relief from onsite, uh, queuing and vehicle stacking. Um, there, there was a request to do an analysis of the store in Wilmington, Mass. And understand how that drive-through queue lane functions. Um, we, we, we didn't do it, uh, for a couple of reasons. One, with, with the, uh. You know, with COVID and a lot of the things that have taken place is, is Starbucks is now looking at some different operational things with, that they build into their drive-throughs, which aren't at all of their other stores. Um, uh, one of that is they have a walk-up window. Um, which allows for somebody wanting to park, they could park quick and then walk up to that pickup window. That's not, uh, consistent at, at all other locations. It's not in the Wilmington store. Um, they also, you know, they focus on, and they provide some additional parking spaces for. If you come into the drive-through lane and you place an order and it may take them longer than, than normal to fulfill that order, they actually direct you to go pull around and park in a space. And they'll bring that order out to you to improve the efficiency and how they move vehicles through that drive-through. Um, so, so, you know, with that, they're, they've been very focused on making sure that they can maneuver their vehicles and then around their sites. So that they don't have adverse impact. So, so, you know, we didn't do a, a, a drive-through queue analysis. I think it's, um, you know, there's not a, exactly a very easy way to do it and frankly, the Wilmington store isn't really, um. Reflective of how this operation would be and, and they're, and with their new COVID protocols, there really aren't any constructed yet. This is one of the first, we actually, uh, we're working on a number of these, but this is probably one of the first five that's going to be, uh, constructed in the state of Massachusetts with these protocols in place. Um, so they definitely have been focused on efficiency and moving vehicles in and around their site. Fortunately, we actually have quite a bit of onsite storage and queuing so that there's more than adequate room onsite to accommodate, um. You know, to accommodate vehicles as they enter the, enter the site and, and want to use the drive-through. Um, we provided an analysis of the stopping site distances and the intersection site distance. We included that analysis in our report. Um. We, uh, included some discussion on the, the, the TDM, um, for the, uh, transportation demand management measures. Um, we'll provide, uh, you know, the tenant is willing to provide, uh, an informational packet that talks about public transportation services, map schedules, fair information. Um, you know, uh, and they're going to allow for, um, you know, uh. Places onsite for them to have, you know, a break room and things like that to discourage off-site trips during break hours and things like that. And then we did include pedestrian and, um, bicycle parking accommodations onsite. And I think with the, uh, addition of a new sidewalk along the front edge, that should more than adequately address, um. A lot of those concerns, especially since there really aren't, it'll, they'll kind of be sidewalks to nowhere, but we understand that's the first step in, in getting a broader, uh, sidewalk transportation network. Um, those were, I, I think Casey went through the other comments from a, um, site plan standpoint. You know, there were requests to, to, to further modify the parking spaces along the egress drive-through lane. Again, we're trying to, to, um, uh, reuse this facility with the minimal disruption as possible. Um, you know, we think that there's more than adequate room in there to maintain those parking spaces along that egress lane. Um, and it's in, uh, consistent with how the site's operated for, for, uh, a, a long period of time when it was a bank. You know, we obviously understand that our driveway trips are going to be more than what that bank was, but I think our, our traffic study does demonstrate that. There's adequate, uh, capacity in the roadway network to accommodate the use and, um. We, you know, we, uh, happy to answer questions the commission may have, but we, um, we think that what we, what we designed is. Is a, is a good way to adapt and re, reuse the site and I think our analysis demonstrates that the area roadway network can accommodate it.
Very good. Well, thank you, Kevin. Is there anything from your traffic engineers that you want to add or, or not?
I actually am a traffic engineer.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right. Okay.
Yeah, it's okay.
That makes it easy.
No problem.
Very good.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, thank you. Uh, so if you're all set, we'll open it up to the board. Um, board members, Mr. Ryder?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um. Uh, want to thank the, uh, engineers, uh, well put together. I like, uh, a team that comes in and you guys have literally crossed every T and dotted every I. Thank you. That makes our work, uh, very easy. Um. I do like the fact that you're, uh, going to DOT for that, um, entrance. I think that's going to be a big help with, um, traffic coming out of the drive-through. traffic coming out of the drive through. That's going to be significant for people that want to take that right turn and not impacting people waiting to take the left, that's going to be a, a big help. Me personally, I don't see the big issue with the waiver on the parking signs, that's understanding, or I should say that the size of the parking diagrams, understanding that's your, the company's requirement, understand, probably a safety insurance issue. I don't see that. The off street parking is pretty much, you're working off the existing on the front section. I think that's something that's doable and sidewalk as well, if you're going to be installing, I should say, if you're going to DOT for the permit anyways, I think it makes sense to all include that all encompassing in that permit. But, you know, I don't have anything further right now, but I, once again, I want to thank both engineers, the traffic report was excellent. I wish they all came in like this, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ryder. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, just a couple of quick ones. On the, I don't know if we mentioned it last time, but those, those front four spaces, the ones that you guys want to keep, but don't, you know, they don't completely necessarily fit, no, the ones on the left, the angled ones. Yeah, those ones. I wonder if it, if there's any sense to trying to make those, limit those ones to employee parking. That way, you know, the employees are going to be there for a longer period of time and you're not going to have, you don't want, or you can avoid having customers walking across your exiting traffic. If you limit those to employee parking, I don't know what the, I don't know how many parking spaces you guys need for shift, but I don't know, four seems like it probably would cover you, right?
Yeah, we can certainly designate those as employee parking.
It just feels like that leaves you the better spaces for the customers since they're going to be in and out and the employees are more likely to be there for a shift amount of time. The next one is, without seeing the, the, they'll be able to think of the existing, I know you have, the reason you put the cut through, where you do is because it fit in a gap, right? The cut through from the adjacent property. If that really does, if that should stay there, I'm wondering, as opposed to say moving up a little bit towards the street so that it lines up with the, the cross box for the, for the handicap spaces, if you can't do that, that's fine. You know, if it has to stay there, but in either case, I wonder if maybe some of the same slash lines that you have for crosswalk in the front, one maybe that lines up from, maybe at an angle from that across to where the, the lattice pod is for the handicap spaces for, you know, give people who are driving in a little heads up just in case someone starts to walk across.
Yeah, we can definitely.
We can certainly do that.
Yeah, I think my one thought is though, until we, until there's more of a, you know, a formal agreement or something worked out on the opposite, with the opposite of butter, where it's like more of a clearly defined path, I'm a little reluctant to provide pavement markings on our site if it's not something that's kind of worked out and coordinated.
So what, what if we leave it that if you work that out, they'll, it'll be installed, how's that?
I, I think that's perfectly reasonable, absolutely.
And then in, in comment to sort of maybe to help solve your issue with the traffic, our, our traffic person who commented on you guys giving us a different study based on the full size of the building. If there was something in the permit that basically just made note of that the, like a limiting note that just says that, that the, the approximate five hundred and fifty square feet labeled vacant space for coffee shop storage will not be developed to expand the service area without returning to the planning board for approval. That way it accounts for that section?
Sure, I, I, I think that's fine, I think there was also some discussions, if I remember correctly, at the last hearing about possibly doing a, a post opening study.
That too, that's something separate, that was more, more just because we don't know exactly what everything will be, but I think this will solve the issue on, it's not space that you would otherwise need, but it's there, but to alleviate the concern of, well, what if the place is bigger? Well, you guys are saying you're not going to use it any bigger than what you present to us, since you've already got it labeled as vacant space, you know, storage, if we just make that note and just, if it turns out in the future you try to expand it, you just got to come back and tell us and we, you know, we deal with it then. And that alleviates the need for you guys to give us a number beyond your twenty one, twenty one hundred square feet studies, that makes sense?
It, it does, I think that's, I think that's perfectly reasonable and, and we're actually including the full twenty nine hundred that they're occupying. Which is again, eight hundred or so square feet more than what their normal building size is. So we, I think we already have a little bit of a conservative analysis, but I think that's a great suggestion, we'd be happy to do that and I think that coupled with the, the post opening study to kind of reaffirm should really help establish that, you know, that, that we're comfortable with our traffic generation.
All right, and then the last thing is, I'll just say that I'm, I'm glad that it looks like you might end up doing the sidewalk, I realize it'll be sort of the sidewalk to no place for right now, but I think both from the way it'll look, the safeties and the just having that done so that hopefully it can be linked up with other pieces eventually, that you're, it, it'll just be better off of the site and since you got to go in anyways, it's probably the better approach. And just the last one is the, that, that, those two egress lanes I think are ideal. I think you're going to mirror, or I don't think it's actually official, maybe it just works this way, but McDonald's does a similar thing. I'm not sure if it's even official, I don't know if it just works out that way, but I think it worked, it'll work for you on the opposite side of Livingston Street, the same way I think it works for McDonald's, so I think that's ideal. And I'm all set, Mr. Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Delaney.
Mr. Delaney. I'm unmuting.
I'm sorry?
Did the fire department approve the turning radiuses for in and out of the driveways?
We, we sent, we sent it to them, we haven't heard back yet. I don't, I don't believe.
Okay, and I, I, I have one other question. It seems like the sight line of the exit is crossing over the abutted property.
That's correct, I mean, it's, it's an existing condition, again, we have an existing driveway in egress here, but, but that is correct, that's like distance does cross, that side triangle does extend over the abutting, abutting property. Now, now, part of that actually goes through their driveway. So, so their, you know, their, their site distance also is kind of within that same site triangle, but, but that is correct.
In, in existing conditions, that area is, is clear. It's ma, it's mainly pavement.
Okay, I, I don't know, I just, I just want to make, you know, I'm, I'm, I don't know what I'm trying to do, I'm just trying to see, you, you've got a sight line that's crossing over somebody's property. If they park a car or a truck, the, the person coming out can't see to the right. I, I don't know, as a matter of fact, I don't know if there's, I really don't know if there's any answer for it unless you put your cars all the way out into the middle of the street. But, I don't know, we've, we haven't done anything with this, I think we took care of some of this in the past. That the sight lines for your in and out, can't cross over the abutted property, they have to be able to look up and down the street. If I'm correct. Other than that, Mr. Chairman, I'm all set.
Thank you, Mr. Delaney, Mr. Fratalla.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of questions. So with the Starbucks brand and, and, and are you planning on majority of people coming to Starbucks doing drive through? Is that the?
Um, I think that, that's been their experience as of late, but they do provide for the ability for, again, you, they have a lot of mobile pickups, you can do a mobile pickup, you can, you can walk up to the window, that's actually a new response to COVID feature. On the fact that you, they actually have like a pickup window, where you can do a mobile order, walk up and grab it.
So my, my question is along the lines of, I'm, I'm actually a Dunkin' Donuts guy myself, but, um, so, can we help, we don't have a Starbucks in Tewksbury, but maybe I will be, but, um, I, it seems to be more parking spots at, at, at your competitors' locations than you are providing here. So my concern is with COVID passing and moving on and, and people coming into Donut Chops more and off, more often. Do you see a need for more parking spots, you know, Mr. Johnson asked about the employees. I'm like, okay, they're taking up four, five, maybe six spots. And then the public coming in and, and rather than doing drive through, going, going inside, you know, with, on a regular basis. So do we have enough parking onsite?
So we, we, yeah, we do, twenty five is really that number that they're targeting. And if they're looking at a new facility, they'd want that to be their minimum, so, you know, so we're there. We don't think we would need more than that, I think, because that builds in a little bit of a cushion for them, but that is a number, you know, I think there were some suggestions about possibly eliminating some parking spaces, removing some spaces. I think they start to have some concerns if we got below that twenty five number. But I think since we have it, I think we, we're, we're going to be, we have more than adequate to accommodate the use.
Okay, I mean, a lot of people do, do drive through, I'm just concerned about the fact that if somebody does want to start going into these buildings that we have enough parking and if that's the number you guys work with on a regular basis, then that's fine, but I mean, I know you have a big building there, but, um, is there a second floor to that building too?
There, there actually is some second floor space that's there today, that was there when it operated at a bank.
Yeah.
But it's, it's, there's no, it's, that's not going to be utilized as part of this.
Okay. All right. So let me ask you another question. Was the feed that we provided to you for the sidewalks, was that a, a deal breaker for you?
No, I think it was, it was probably in line, but I think that now since we have to go to the DOT anyways, it's probably easier just for us to incorporate that into our improvements.
Okay, just curious because we're, we're in discussion with, with others as far as the, the, the actual cost. And, you know, we're deciding on whether that's a good number or not, so, but, um, other than that, I think, like I said, Mr. Ryder said, you know, good presentation, nice, nice parking and traffic study analysis, so, I look forward to getting the final plans approved by Mr. By the fire department, Mr. Hardeman and so forth and going forward, so. All set, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody, Brian, is there anybody online for this?
We have no callers at the moment, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I'm going to wait a moment too. Moment's up. If someone calls, let me know.
In anticipation of no calls, Mr. Chairman, it's out of the process of continuing this to seven twenty five on four twelve.
Sounds like a plan.
Second.
Is there, is there, I guess, my, my, I'm sorry, I guess my, my question was, is there a reason, you know, I think we, we tried to do our best to be responsive to all the comments from staff and even the peer reviewer, I guess, is there really anything outstanding that we need to address that would require the hearing to stay open?
Just to cut, just a final letter from Mr. Adamant. And I don't, Anna, is there anything that you can think of? Well.
Mr. Chairman, I think the only thing would be that I think she would maybe suggest the same thing as the other hearing, which is just the finalized last version of the plans.
Right.
Have to be in before we can make our final determination.
And we have that, Kevin. I think.
I, I, I mean, I, I think these are, are kind of it, I guess the only exception would be maybe putting that sidewalk across the front edge. But that's really something we have to work out with Mass DOT anyways. You know, I, I, I thought we had addressed all of the rest of the, the comments and the concerns, we were, we were, we were hopeful that we might be able to close it out this evening. And, and obviously, you know, we, we know you guys also have a very busy agenda and, and if we can take something off your plate, we'd always like to do that.
Okay.
Ditto. Ditto.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
The traffic peer review for the town is also online, I don't know if he had anything to say.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you, and who is that?
Hi, my name is Bernie Guma, Vanessa's associate.
Okay, do you have anything? Hey, Bernie, anything to add?
Mr. Chairman, I, I mean, I think they, the, they, they answer most of the traffic questions that we've, basically on this meeting, I haven't seen the written version of it, but I, the concern, the only area of concern that I'm talking about is probably that we kind of recommend a fun couple spaces on the entrance, access driveway, be kind of eliminated, the reason why is that because that when the vehicle turning in, if the cars in the first two space, when they back out, they won't be able to see and that might be a safety concern. I mean, before as a bank might be okay, but with a coffee shop, there's a lot more vehicle movement. I, I just want to put that out, I, I mean, you know, that there's something, it's like, there's no separation if a car turning in, the next space is less than one car's length. And if people are making a left turn in, that might be a problem, that might be a safety concern, that I just want to raise it to the board.
Well, thank you, let me ask you this question, what, Kevin, how many spaces on the right, on the entrance driveway on the left?
So there's, there's four angled spaces, the egress driveway, there's four angled spaces. Well, there's, there's four on the access, there's four coming in. You know, one of the things we could do is, you know, again, I think those earliest spaces, they, they, we're really not expecting those to be used much and maybe we can also designate those first spaces on the egress as well as an employee space.
Okay. All right. Does that sound all right to you, Mr. Gwen?
Uh, well, I mean, I would, I, I think in, in the minimum, you said you let me the first space, I, I mean, just because of the, the distance between the driveway into the site, I mean, that's at least you gotta give one vehicle length to get in to, you know, before the vehicle is backing up, they could see it, that's my opinion, but I mean, as a, you know, just for safety concern.
I understand that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Johnson.
Just, I, I, I understand the, the, the traffic concern, but I mean, I made the reference before, but I mean, it's kind of the same setup as McDonald's. You know, so I just, I, I mean, I don't know, I'm not aware of any major issues at McDonald's with the same thing. So I just, I feel like, and they need, you know, they're, they're requesting to have the twenty five spaces as, as the number they're looking for, if we try to eliminate spaces, then we're going to cut them under the number they're looking for. And Mr. Fratalla just made note of, you know, we kind of want to keep as many spaces as we can. And short of finding it to be a, a, a problem in the future, which I think, I guess, would fall under our asking them to provide that study in the future of how things are working. If it turns out that one of the things that comes up in that is that they're having a problem with the entrance because of that parking space in the front, I guess we could try to address it then, but I'd rather not ax them out of a spot for a problem I don't think McDonald's has and I'm, I would think that McDonald's is a little more high traffics than even Starbucks is in terms of people pulling in and going in. But, I don't know.
Yeah, I think you could write that into your condition, I mean, it's a, a fact, I just want to raise it up for the board to be aware of, of the situation, I mean, you know, it might not be a safety issue, might not, people might not use that space, but it's just on a, on a review standpoint, I just want to point out to the board, that might be a problem.
Do you think, would you feel more, Mr. Gwen, would you feel more comfortable if the first space going in on the left? Do you think, would you feel more, uh, Mr. Gwen, would you feel more comfortable if the first space going in on the left was, um, taken out?
Uh, yes, I think if we don't, you may too, if you take out the first one, I think it's more comfortable than just leaving it in.
Okay.
And I just giving a.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I, I just, I mean, I just want to point out that might be a chance. I.
Yeah.
Might not ever happen. I mean, you know, it just, uh, I just looking at a safety standpoint.
Very good.
For the site. And, uh, uh, that's pretty much, uh, you know, I think, you know, all right.
Thank you, Bernie. Uh, let me ask Kevin. Kevin, is that all right with you?
You know, I, I, I definitely think, I, 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 I can't a- agree that bringing it down to twenty-four spaces won't create an issue with our, with the tenant. Because I know that twenty-five is, that's been a floor that they've told us we needed to try to maintain. Um. I also, I don't think it would, but another, one of our other big goals here is trying to minimize site disturbance. And, and we believe in, um, our disturbance is less than twenty thousand square feet, so it's less than the trigger for the, uh, land disturbance permit. I don't think that would push us over. Um, might be close. I'll probably ask Casey.
Well, can you?
So, so with the, with the, the sidewalk, where the, um, I did a quick, uh, area calc for that. And we, it would bring us up to nineteen hundred and thirty square feet. Um, so it eighteen by ten, no, it would still be on, would still be under. Um.
Okay. So, so one is not a deal breaker?
I, I, I can't speak for the tenant, but I know that they, they said twenty-five is a floor before, but we can, uh, maybe discuss it with them.
Okay. Um, well, we're gonna have a week, we're gonna have two weeks before we have another hearing. So if we have a, this is a question. I mean, this would be a big change.
Okay.
Uh, the other thing is that I think, uh, uh, you know, if we're not doing a queuing analysis on, on the side driveway, that should be what, wouldn't be the condition that they said monitor just in case a queue is longer than what is expected around the, you know, the driveway going out. It might not happen. It might have enough storage. I mean, I don't know how a stop, stop operating on the queuing at this times. Sometimes I see them longer, sometimes it's shorter, but usually what we do on a traffic study is we kind of observe a similar site and look at how the queuing affect, how much vehicle is queuing the longest queue to see if there's adequate queuing, uh, space allocated for the drive-through.
Kevin, is that a, something that you want to discuss?
Well, I think, I think that certainly, you know, again, based on our analysis, um, and based on the gaps that, that we know are in the, the mainline volumes on Main Street, you know, we think that, that we won't have an issue. I think that's probably something else that we'd want to include in our, in our post-opening study. And we can kind of pay special attention to that and discuss, you know, and kind of provide more commentary at that time. And we can talk about real world experience queues at that point.
Okay. All right.
Uh, so what is the queuing, uh, I, I want to ask another question for Kevin. What is the, uh, ninety foot percentile queue out of the exit driveway now? You, uh, if you've got two driveways, I don't have to actually be personal. I don't know what it is.
It's, it's, uh, and, and I'm sorry if it didn't get over to you, uh, Bernie, uh, we probably should have sent it directly, but when we submitted it last week. Um, it's, it's four point two vehicles.
So it's four vehicles, is that back to where the access driveway is, that the two-way access?
It doesn't actually, uh, no, it, it doesn't block the full, um, the, 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 the access across the front of the site. So there's enough room to still get around.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, you know, if it's just killing yourself, uh, your site not blocking the access, and then that will be fine. I, I haven't looked at it, so I can't tell you what, how far it is back. Yeah, that's, that's my, my question is.
Thank you, Bernie. Bernie, thank you for your input, Kevin. We should be able to handle that. With, uh, your tenant?
Yeah, yeah, we'll coordinate, see if we can eliminate that first space on the entrance drive.
And obviously if, uh.
And then.
If.
Yeah, and then we can get, I, I think, and, and I think, uh, Commissioner Johnson mentioned this before. Since I know Anna mentioned before, she wants to make sure we have the final plans. What we'll do is we'll, we'll also have a sidewalk and we'll look at that one space. And we'll get revised plans submitted to you in advance to your next hearing.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, do we make a motion to, uh, to, um?
Mine's still pending.
Yeah, I, I thought I, I thought there's a motion in a second, but.
Okay, let's do it then.
Seven twenty-five.
Yes.
We have a motion that's made, been made and seconded on the motional favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Impose the ayes. Have it. Mr. Ryder?
Aye.
Mr. Fratelli?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Delaney?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, next item on the agenda. Nine twenty-nine seventy-eight Livingston Street. Um, continued from three eight. Open Space Residential Design Defender of Subdivision Land Disturbance Permit.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
And who is here? Oh, Mr. Handley.
Uh, Mr. Handley's here. Good evening. Um.
Good evening.
Could I share my script?
Absolutely. Are you done yet?
Yeah, I know. Let me, uh. Okay, so I guess, uh, in light of it being twenty of eleven here.
No, is it? And Annie's up.
Mr. Chairman, we're gonna have some issues with that, getting to our last applicant.
I'm sorry?
We're gonna have issues getting to our last petitioner coming up.
Nine thirteen East Street, I understand that.
Yeah. And nine thirty-five.
No, nine thirty-five is also.
Okay.
That's.
Okay.
Okay, so, uh, we, uh, in light of all this stuff, um, in the fact that we've had one meeting, formal meeting with you. We had our concept and we had our formal meeting with you on, I think it was the twenty-second of February. Um, we, uh, submitted the plan set and we had, uh, received a review letter on Thursday of last week. Um, and, and there's a handful of, of technical comments. Um, you know, three pages, two, two pages worth of, of comments. So, so we have some back and forth to do with DPW to come to you with a clean letter.
Okay.
Having, having said that though, there are like two or three items that I kind of would like to focus in on. Get your initial thoughts on it and then we'll go back and, and we'll, uh, we'll clean everything up. So.
Okay.
Um, uh, let's see. So we got the letter last week. We're actively changing the plans. We'll have new plans, uh, submitted this week. So the notable, uh, developments here in this, uh, in this package, um, are, we came before you last time around with a plan that had a proposed easement uh, on one side of the access drive.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we have a property that has, has its own geometry. So I just kind of highlighted this blue line here, essentially nine twenty, uh, nine seventy-eight Livingston Street.
Mm-hmm.
It accesses through a forty-foot section. So, and I've had a lot of conversations on a handful of recent jobs about how we try to deal with this here. We don't have the ability to do around this. It's not, it's not, we're not capable. We don't have the ability to do. We've only got a forty-foot throat here to go up to Livingston Street. Last time we came in front of you, we had a situation where we were, uh, proposing to we were proposing to, bear with me just for a second. Tools, comments. We were proposing to provide, uh, the twenty-five foot pavement radius on the exit side.
Right.
We had secured an easement from nine fifty Livingston Street.
Yep.
Okay, on the entrance side, we kind of had a stickier situation. We had a ten-foot radius on the right of way. And we had no rounding whatsoever on, on the right of way line. Okay? So we sat down, uh, Annie sat down and he was able to secure an easement from ten eighteen and ten twenty Livingston Street. So you see, this is a twenty-five foot radius here, which means that what that's going to allow us to do, and I'm sorry for flipping around here so much, but what it's going to allow us to do is put a roadway down the existing forty-foot throat of this lot.
Okay.
Have a twenty-five foot pavement radius. And these easements here for both, uh, uh, ten eighteen, ten twenty and nine fifty, they've been provided to the town last week. Annie was able to get the, the easements prepared. Uh, we have the attorney prepare them. We put together a sketch. I believe they've been signed. And we provided that information out of the town. So the idea behind this is all of the rights that the town would normally have inside of a right of way will be afforded to, to you through these easements. That's the idea of what we're trying to do. So we think we've made an approval. We've taken away this ten-foot radius.
Yep.
DPW wasn't happy with, and neither was the fighter pop. And even though we're able to show that the movements basically worked, right?
Yep.
This information has been provided to DPW. In their comment letter, they're still not agreeable to it. So we're hoping that once they read the language in this and we have discussions about if, if there's something else that you need, we'll provide it. You guys give us your concerns and we'll try to address it. That's kind of where we stand with this. So from, from your perspective, we've been able to provide you with a twenty-five foot pavement radius that meets subdivision regulations. We can't do anything about the right of way radius because we just don't own that land. We can't own that land. So what we've done is we've provided the, these twenty-five foot, uh, easements to give you back the, the, any, any kind of, uh, uh, access or maintenance, uh, uh, rights that you would, you would, uh, you would have.
Okay.
So that's number one. And I'm just gonna kind of go through the other couple of things here kind of quickly and then maybe.
Just, just real quick, Jim, on that. We have to remember that this is a private way.
Right.
So the fact that it's an easement, you know, that, you know, it, it provides a twenty-five foot radius that they're looking for. If they were going to accept the road, they probably want to own the fee, but they're not going to accept the road because it's going to be a private way. So it meets the, uh, the requirement for the subdivision regulations. Thank you.
Yes. Okay, so.
Thank you, Mr. Kukul.
So the, uh, so the, the next couple of things here are, uh, in this letter, DPW has asked us to make provisions to allow the roadway width to be, uh, twenty-four feet. Because there's some concern that a twenty-foot wide roadway with four houses will have challenges when two vehicles kind of come up the access drive at the same time. I don't agree with it. This is a private roadway. Um, and I think it's pretty consistent with what you guys have, have allowed in the past. I, I know it is. Um, in, in what DPW has allowed in the past. So we'll work with them on this. Uh, but it seems like the goalpost is, is maybe moving a little bit for us because twenty-foot for a private road for a development of this size has been okay in the past. And we're being asked to now widen this to, to twenty-four feet.
Right.
Um, and then the final thing is, in light of that, uh, they've asked that, uh, we provide vertical granite curving on this development. And, and what we're proposing right now is bit berm. So if you have a twenty-four foot wide roadway and you have a bituminous berm, I drive a small sedan. I could kind of get on that bit berm without a big deal. The vertical granite, I wouldn't even try it because I bought them up. So I think that the twenty-foot wide roadway with the bit berm on either side just provides, uh, sufficient room. I mean, you're talking about a third car being down there as two cars come back and forth.
Right.
They're only six feet wide, give or take. That, that would be required to create an obstacle. So those are the three things that really tie that I'd like to kind of pick your brains on is, is it, it, could the easement be delivered to you in a way that you're agreeable for it? And then the twenty-foot versus the twenty-four and then the curb. And I don't know, Dick or Ronnie, if you guys have anything, but those are like the, the, the big ones, uh, so to speak. And we'll clean up everything else going forward.
Yeah, I mean.
Jim, thanks for your input.
Public safety is not compromised and have I mentioned this before? It's a private way.
Thank you, Richard. Annie, do you have anything you want to add? Your mic's off.
No, he doesn't have anything.
Can, can you hear me?
Yes, now. Yeah.
Yes, all set, Mr. Fowler, for now.
Thank you. Mr. Who?
I will.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Annie. Jim, thank you very much for your, uh, your input. Um, let's see what the board has to say. Board members? Um, Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I don't. On the first waiver, I don't know, and we've had situations where we've approved this, this waiver and not had this available to us. I don't see why if we're getting the equivalent to what we'd want, when we might have waived it anyways, that we'd have a problem with granting the waiver for this sort of hybrid version. So I have no problem with granting it. Um, if, if the town engineer has some language concerns that he wants to add to, to, to the easements, okay. Um, but otherwise, I mean, I'd be just as apt to grant the waiver anyways. So the fact that they went out and found a way to put the radius in any, you know, and give it to us in a way, I have no issue with. So that's waiver one. Uh, waiver two, again, we've done this on other projects where we have a twenty-foot roadway. I don't see why I would have a problem with doing it here. So, you know, in terms of that goalpost moving, I, I, I sort of am on the same page because it's a private, it's gonna be a private road, driveway, well, whatever. Think of it in terms of a driveway. It's a road, but it's a, you know, but it's private either way. Um, so, you know, the four people who live there, you know, can work it out amongst themselves how they get up and down the road. Um, and then the third one. But we're, we're back on the sidewalk thing again. I, I don't, have we asked them to put in granite curb sidewalking on a private, like four block subdivision?
Well, well, this is just specifically the curbing type because we're, we're seeking a waiver from the sidewalks. And we understand it's fee and loo, we gotta go through that whole thing, but just the curbing type itself. Um, we're proposing bit berm and the comment we got back is that they'd like to see vertical grid.
So are you concerned, you're concerned with it from a calculation standpoint?
No, I'm concerned with the difference between, uh, being required to provide vertical granite curving on both sides of the roadway for a private roadway, uh, when in the past we've done the tuminous, uh, the tuminous berm.
Right.
Um, and that's been okay.
Right. That's what I was saying at the beginning. It's like, that's not what we've asked people to do in the past, so I don't know why we're asking it now. So I don't have a problem with what you're proposing because I'm not aware of having had a problem with it in the past when we've had projects like this. So I don't know. I, I guess it's the same as the one before, which I don't know why we're, why it's being put forward this time. What's, is, is there something different, I don't think, in this as compared to any other? Um, and then, you know, our calculation is going to be the next thing, you know, that's going to have to get sorted out because that's now a moving target as well that sometime between now and the next hearing, hopefully get an answer on the calculation, um, of what's being waived. But I have no problem with any of the three waivers, the way they are.
Very good.
So I'm all set.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Ryder?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I, I agree with Mr. Johnson. Uh, it's been done in the past. I don't know what's changed.
Nothing.
Nothing. So, uh, hopefully we have some information back for the next meeting.
Very good.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Delaney?
I guess I agree with Mr. Johnson and Mr. Ryder. I don't see a problem with any of this.
No.
I don't have any problems, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Fratelli?
I concur, Mr. Chairman, with, uh, my, my colleagues as far as that goes. And, uh, uh, I would be in favor of, uh, voting for the waivers on all three submissions. So all set.
I'm all set too. Ditto. Um. No one on the phone?
In anticipation of that remaining the same, Mr. Chairman, I will start the process of continuing this to seven thirty on four twelve.
I'll, I'll second it.
Sorry, yes, yes, Mr. Chairman, there are no callers.
Hey, thank you very much. Okay, we have a motion. Wait a second.
Back in.
On the motion, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Impose the ayes.
Steven, are you sure you don't want to adjust the time till like ten?
I'm gonna stick with seven thirty.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Delaney?
Aye.
Mr. Ryder?
Aye.
Mr. Fratelli?
Aye.
Shiva's aye. Thank you, gentlemen. Time to go to bed.
Thank you, board members.
Yep. Thanks, Jim.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry to interrupt. This is Andy Street. You mentioned in passing that nine thirty-five is all set. Is that?
Yes.
I was here to request the continuance. I just wanted to make sure that that was.
No, that's, yes, yeah, we talked about that earlier this evening, uh and that's been written in for um seven oh five.
Okay.
On uh the twelfth, I think.
Thank you. I'm sorry I missed that, and sorry for the interruption. Thank you.
No, 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 that's fine, fine, fine. All right, thanks. Sometimes we do stuff without you knowing, you know.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Um. Next item on the agenda, nine thirteen East Street. Uh site plan special permit continue from March eighth.
Yes, uh Jim Hanley, Civil Design Consultants. And I am trying to find my screen. Okay. Um again, I think I can keep this kind of short and sweet for you. Um, we were in front of you on March eighth. That was the last planning board uh hearing that we had. We loved that hearing, had uh wanting to have a a bit of a further discussion on the sidewalks. Uh so on the tenth, uh we got conservation's approval. They closed us out. Um and then on the seventeenth of uh last week, I think that was Wednesday of last week, we put together a request for, I guess I'd call it a conditional waiver um for the sidewalk. And the reason for this is because we don't know what that fee and lieu fee would be or its. So it's it's hard for us to say, take the sidewalks off and and let's move forward with the fee when we don't know what that is, and we've heard numbers that are frankly astronomical and don't make any sense. So um the idea here was to provide you with this as a as a uh as an optional waiver, I guess. We have the sidewalk shown on the plan. Um there's been no changes to the plan. There's not been no resubmission. And the intent here is to um is to close the meeting tonight. Uh hopefully get an approval with this uh conditional waiver. And then as we move through the process over the next couple of weeks, we will um we'll we'll drill down on the on the fee and how exactly that gets um get that gets calculated, and then make a determination as to which direction we prefer to go.
Jim, that sounds good, but let me ask you, forewarn you. If a figure comes in that you guys don't want to hear, we can't open the hearing again and discuss it.
Right, but but we have the sidewalk on the plane.
Okay.
Basically, we'll build a sidewalk, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, okay, all right. Okay.
This is the only, as you know, we're up against a time crunch. So this is the only way to do this is to say, you know, I mean, we could come in for a nonsubstantial change saying we're gonna give you the money, but we just thought if it's written into the permit that the sidewalk will be built unless at some point down the road, there's an agreement on the dollar figure for the fee in lieu of.
Okay.
That way we can close the hearing out if if that's the desire of the board. We can move on with getting the special permit drafted, signed, and recorded so we can meet our deadline for our variance and building permit.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, thank you, Mr. Kuko. Uh Jim, you're all set with that, right?
Yep.
Okay, Anna? Um, you were all set to go on this?
Um. Yeah, I mean, it's once the hearings close, it's closed, so I just want everyone to understand that.
Yes, yeah, that they know, you know. Okay, board members, instead of me asking individually, does anybody have any questions relative to the submittal? Eric?
No, no.
Uh Jay?
Who, me?
Jay, do you have any?
No.
Vinny?
All set, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Johnson, very formal.
All set, Mr. Chairman.
All set, and I'm all set. Okay, I know that's not kosher, but that's the way it's gonna be. Um, yes, Anna.
So just to clarify, there's no waivers then being requested?
Correct.
Okay, that's.
No, that's not really true.
Yeah, no, that's not.
It's a, it's, I mean, it's a hybrid waiver, basically saying that the the permit as submitted shows the sidewalks being built. They're pla- the petitioner intends to build those sidewalks unless an agreement comes to pass with the town for a fee in lieu of, for whatever reason, but the plans show a sidewalk being built at a bare minimum.
So hybrid bringing, yeah, hybrid being a new term.
I'll fix the language when we say it in a second.
Okay.
Well, yeah, would you say that there would be kind of like an administrative determination by the board after the fact?
I wouldn't um commit to that because it might be a modification. So that's something that.
Not a modification.
It's not a modification if I say it now.
Right.
I understand that it's almost eleven o'clock, but you know, um, I'm not going to, I can't consent that if something's a modification or not, so um this waiver is a little unusual for me, so I just wanted to put that out there.
How about this then? Pull pull the board. If if it turns out that this is, this becomes a um uh something that we have to hear as an administrative action as a nonsubstantial change, that the, at this time, the members of the board would be amenable to that if that's the process that has to be done in the event that our waiver as written doesn't cover it. So if you have, if the board is amenable to that, then the petitioner knows that going forward.
I'll ask that. Mr. Johnson?
I am amenable to that, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ryder?
I am amenable to that.
Mr. Fratelli?
I am as well, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Delaney?
I am as well.
Chev's aye. Mrs. McGinty? You all set?
Yes, um have we heard from the public yet? I.
No, yes, I I quickly did that.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I I know, you you know, I I just lied. Um, is there anyone, Brian, on the on the public for this on phone?
Everyone's asleep, Bob.
I'm sorry?
Everyone's asleep.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, you're right. Um, wow, this is cool. Um, motion, yes, Anna?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. So if if you are gonna close, which it sounds like you are, um I have some conditions that I can pull up on the screen.
Okay.
When you get.
Go ahead. All right.
I'll do that now.
Okay.
Oh, I guess I have to stop here.
Yeah, Jim, you have to drop your.
Yep, I got it.
Mr. Chairman, just before we close this, let's just look at these to make sure we're all on the same page.
That's what we're doing, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Just a minute. Okay, so.
Okay.
I prepare these in advance. It's one through nine. Um, so I'll scroll through them.
All right.
Um, so.
Yep.
Do you want me to read these out or?
No, I'm reading it now. I'm down to number six.
Okay, so I'm gonna scroll to the second half of it.
I can't read now, okay.
Yeah, so.
Thank you. Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I think number six was something that we've talked about in the past and uh agreed that we didn't need.
You didn't need that.
Correct.
Correct. All right, Anna?
So, Mr. Chairman, that's number six. The applicant shall obtain a written permission of discourage, the discharge storm wire, so that's not, we don't need that one. Okay, so I'm gonna delete that right now.
Yep.
And then for number um formerly, yeah, number five, I have a note here about the type of sidewalk. And I didn't know the board wanted to add that detail in there on the condition.
What's the answer to that, Jim?
Um, I'm not aware that we're required to provide concrete sidewalks. We we have the tuminous on the plan set. Um. Which is consistent with most of the sidewalks that we build is tuminous.
Yeah, things are disappearing, Jim. Um, is, with the curbing?
So so the, so that, we don't have curbing on two-thirds of it because we offset it into the grass rip up against the property lines, and we didn't have to put curbing so that then we didn't have to make drainage improvements. And then all the way down by the the uh train tracks, we have vertical granite, okay? And that discharges back into our pond with the tuminous uh sidewalks.
Okay.
Mr. Mr. Chairman, I think that was a condition that Mr. Ryder brought up, that he wanted to make sure that we maintained that shoulder from the railroad track to our driveway. If, I believe that's what I I remember, that Mr. Ryder, you know, you have to make sure that you maintain that, so that's the area that I believe we were talking about, from the railroad track to the driveway.
Right, correct. Okay, very good. I like that. Um.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Was that a change to the condition then, or just keep it as is?
Yep, I'm gonna make that a same one.
I think you can keep it as is. I don't need to speak for Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Leave it at the edge of pavement. Yeah, that's fine. Number six, yeah, look at your response with future maintenance, so there's going to be any walls, just seven. That's typical. Number seven.
Mm-hmm, yes, it's a standard.
Typical. Number eight.
Yes, no, no problem with that, Mr. Chairman. Number eight, we've already agreed to do that with conservation.
Yeah, I thought it was, right. Okay, thank you. Anna, you're all set with that then?
Okay, so I'm gonna exit out of this now, so stop.
Yes, good. Okay. Um, we have a motion? To, uh let's accept the um waivers first.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Uh, we're not gonna close it, not gonna hear the vote on the barrier. Oh, yeah, all right. Okay.
Only have the one.
On the motion, what's that?
We only have the one, right?
Yes, right. On the motion, on favor say aye.
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 Oppose the ayes have it. Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Ryder?
Aye.
Mr. Delaney?
Aye.
Mr. Fratelli? Wake up. Mr. Fratelli?
I'm on you, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, aye.
Chev's aye, all right. Um. All right, and so we will hear this, not hear it, we will have this on the uh.
And make a make a motion to approve the project.
Yeah, right.
Waiver first.
Yes.
We just approved the waiver, didn't we?
No.
I was closing the hearing.
We closed the public hearing. Now we have to make a.
Right, the the vote, vote on the waivers.
I make a motion to approve the waivers.
Do we have a second? On, do we have a second? Aye, okay. On the motion, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Mr. Ryder?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Delaney, Mr. Fratelli? Aye. Chev's aye. Um. Time, we don't, we can just put this, you know, we can put this in the report administrative action, can't we?
No, now we have to approve the the actual application.
Yeah, after I do this, I, I'm looking for a time to do it, though. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, we're gonna do it now.
We're gonna do it right now.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the site plan special permit.
Okay.
With the conditions, whether previously listed on the screen, um if Anna could put those back up, numbers one through eight
Eight.
as they appear, and as we just went through them a few moments ago.
Second.
All right. On the motion, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, the ayes have it. I thought there was a reason that we had to discuss this um or something we were waiting for. Not? I'm not? I'm incorrect?
Well, we, I think the the waiver basically incorporated what we discussed, where in the event that it didn't, doesn't carry, then we'll just treat it as a administrative action, nonsubstantial change.
That's okay. If we don't, that's right. If we don't, that's right.
Mr. Chairman, point of clarification?
Yes.
Is this a USP and an SPSP?
Well. It's site plan special permit, that's all it says. SPSP. Correct, Anna?
Uh, just a minute.
Yeah.
You guys.
I thought because contractors yard was gonna be a USP as well.
Um.
So.
You would be right.
Okay, um.
What was advertised?
I just have a site plan special permit on the application here, um and it's for a contractor's yard for heavy industrial. Um. So that's what I have in my application, Mr. Chairman.
So, so it was advertised as heavy industrial contractor's garage. We keep going back and forth whether that's a USP or permit or a site plan special permit. So I just wanted noted that it was advertised that way. That's what the board intended to approve.
Okay.
Because it's gonna be a contractor's yard.
That's it. Board members, is that all right?
That's what's on the application, um and that's allowed use, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Just wanted to be clear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um. Well, Mr. Chairman, we need to vote on the uh on the actual permit, right?
We just did.
We just did.
We just did.
Having said that, next item on the agenda is old business. I'm sorry.
We have to continue nine thirty-five.
I'm sorry.
Continue.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to continue nine twenty-five ma- nine thirty-five Main Street to seven oh five on four twelve.
So move.
Second. Second.
On the motion, on favor say aye.
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 Oppose, Mr. Delaney?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Minister Fratelli?
Aye.
Mr. Ryder?
Aye.
Chev's aye.
So did we finalize nine thirteen East Street, Mr. Hanley?
Yes.
Is she still there?
I'm not sure. I I am still here. I'm I'm not sure. I I thought that you voted on the waiver, but then you voted on the.
So can, so the mo- Can we just fix this?
Yeah, the motion was moved and seconded, but the roll call vote did not happen.
Okay, I thought so.
On the motion, on favor say aye on that vote for nine thirteen East Street.
Aye.
Aye.
That second, on the motion, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Delaney?
Aye.
Mr. Ryder?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Fratelli, Chev's aye. Thank you, Don.
Thank you very much for sticking in there with us on this. We really appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Okay, old business? Nothing? Anna?
Um, so, no old business, Mr. Chairman. Um I don't know about the board members, but um.
We have a letter. Yeah, we have correspondence from Mr. Sadrick.
Yeah.
But but that, you, please look at that. And uh, if there's any problem with that, we'll discuss it. He wants us to uh discuss with the owner of the builder of.
Just, just quickly, can we just say that, or make a motion to send a letter to the developer to
Yep.
explain to us why this is not being taken care of as a, as it's supposed to be?
Yep, absolutely.
So I'll make that motion.
Okay, wait a second.
Second.
On the motion, on favor say aye.
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 Mr. Delaney?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Fratelli? Mr. Fratalla?
Aye.
Mr. Ryder?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Uh, new business?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I have an issue. And that is, and that, and that's for everybody that's attentive here, is the length of these meetings. We have to just do something about the length of the meetings. It's 11, 11:15 right now. You know, I don't know whether we're putting too much on, on the, on the agenda or, or what's going on, but we are here rushing through the last meeting and the last permit to try to get it done. I mean, I, so I don't know what the solution is, but something has to be done. We, we, the last meeting was 11 o'clock, this meeting's 11 o'clock. Next meeting's gonna be 11 o'clock as well. It's the same type of agenda we have next meeting, so.
Well, we eliminated two of them already.
Well, Mr. Chairman, also, I mean, this is just seasonal. I mean, this is what's gonna happen every time we get to the spring. We go through half the winter with two hearings a night and get out in five minutes. And this is the trade-off. I mean, we're just simply gonna have to, you know, muddle through when we have this many things. We have to keep pushing them into the next meeting, the next meeting, without being able to finish them. But we can't tell anybody they can't be on the agenda.
No, absolutely not.
Not, Steven, why can't we limit the agenda?
No, you can't.
Because that's not right.
If they, if they put in, if they advertise, it's a time certain and a day certain. You can't do that. But what we can do.
Chairman, what's not okay is the fact that we tell people that 7:25, you have it's gotta be heard, it has not heard till 10:35. I mean, we.
This is, this. Mr. Fratalla, this is what happens. I'll give you a quick shot. If we put real numbers down there for time cer, uh, time to be heard and the one before it doesn't show up, or we do it quickly or quicker, we sit here twiddling our thumbs, waiting for 10:15 to come up. That's, that's, that's why we had to do that a long time ago. If you understand that, that'll be fine.
I understand, Mr. I understand, Mr. Chairman, but I shouldn't, don't like to be here till 11 o'clock on two or three, four nights on our meetings, so.
Well.
We, we could definitely do a better job amongst ourselves of making sure that we stick to the stuff we're actually talking about too. Because we have, we run off on things that don't even have to do with the hearing we're talking about sometimes. And that, that ends up wasting time. Like, we, you know, we, we do, we do go off on a tangent here.
You all set?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. McGinty?
Um, you know, with the agenda, the only kind of flexibility you have is with the administrative items. Moving that to the end of the hearing, when you open it up, when you start your hearing, just say we're gonna move those administrative items to the end.
Okay.
Where you're getting the hearing items, the very, um, you just start with those. Um, that could be a case by case basis, but some of these concept plans takes a while. Um, next hearing, we have a concept plan for 960 Main Street, for example, so it's just something to keep in mind.
Okay, I'd like, I'd like, Anna, I'd like you to just think about that. I'd like the board to think about that. And we will make a decision next meeting. That sounds like a good plan, but I don't want to jump into it without some thought. That way we can not have this problem. Although, as Mr. Johnson said, it's seasonal because everybody knows out there that we're not gonna be here but one week in June, one week in July, and sometimes one week in April and August. Having said that, motion to adjourn is in order.
So move.
Vote.
On the motion, on favor say aye.
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 Oppose, the ayes have it. Mr. Ryder?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Fratalla?
Aye.
Mr. Delaney? Chair votes aye. Good night.